We're gonna get this Milpita City Council meeting started. Need all persons. Need all designated persons to be in their seats. It is 6:00 PM. Okay, great. There is the online. Thank you very much, everybody. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. And we'll go to our city clerk Wendy Wood for the roll call.
Councilmember Tua?
Here.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Present.
Councilmember Pham?
President.
Vice Mayor Montana?
Here.
Mayor Tran?
Here. Thank you very much, our city clerk Wendy Wood. And we do have a closed session item tonight, folks, if you're watching here in City Hall or youtube.com or Facebook Live. We'll check in with our city attorney Christopher Diaz for anything before we adjourn to close session.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Tran. I just wanted to announce for the public and the council that you are going into closed session to consider one item, conference with labor negotiators based on the employee groups that are on the agenda this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. And we'll be back, folks, around 7:00 PM. In the meantime, make your way down to Holiday Magic on Main Street, going on until 9:00 PM tonight. Thank you very much.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you, everybody, for your patience. As we are back from closed session, and we'll resume the open, regular city council meeting for this evening here in the beautiful month of December. It's the seventh of the month, and I look around and I see nothing but the holiday spirit all throughout Milpitas. And as always, here at Milpita City Hall and our Christmas tree here in the rear of the building. And I really believe the shining lights go all the way down to Holiday Magic on Main Street. And so the holidays are back as we gather outdoors and spend time with our community. We just got out of closed session. Let's go ahead and move throughout this agenda. We'll go to our city attorney, Christopher Diaz, for any announcements.
Thank you, Mayor Tran. I just wanted to note for the council and the public that there was no reportable action out of closed session this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. And next up is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Again, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
And we'll move on here to the invocation. I try to maintain the many different emotions as I, many different emotions that I experience as I go throughout our city and our community. And it certainly is a roller coaster, one day to have great joy with the children and families down on Holiday Magic on Main Street with magicians and snow flurries and ice skates on the synthetic ice and just all the activities for the kids. And I was really touched by, really, a bunch of seated families and hearing their joy and laughter. And I was just, my heart was so full. And these past few weeks have been very challenging here in our community. We've lost a couple of residents. And so tonight, I want to use this invocation to pray over each other here in this community and also to pray over at least a couple, just a number of people that we've lost. All right, you know, I just want to do a moment of silence for Kevin Nashida, who was a resident here by the high school and tragically lost his life protecting journalists up in a city north of here. There is mourning in our community with his family. And we also lost another community member, Alyssa Fernandez, who left Earth too soon. So I just want to do a moment of silence here. And please. Thank you very much. And we'll continue to pray for their families. And next up is presentations. Tonight's presentation, it will be presented by Councilmember Evelyn Chua. And come on down.
Tonight, we have a special plaque for a very special commissioner and its library commissioner, Elpidio Estioco. We, the City of Milpitas Council, recognize and congratulate you on almost 15 years of dedicated service to the City of Milpitas while serving as a commissioner on a Library and Education Advisory Commission. During this tenure, you served as commission chair from 2009 to 2017. Some of your notable contributions include the initiation of the youth essay writing contest to middle and high school aged youth, implementation of the fourth tier donation board of the Milpitas Community Library. And you were instrumental regarding the installation of the community mural of Phil M. Farmers, known as the Manongs, which hangs on the wall at the entrance to the children's section of the library. Your leadership and community presence is something to be admired and applauded. We thank you for your tremendous service to the city and your community. Congratulations, and we wish you the best. Commissioner Estioco is not only, he also helped us with the water task force. He was there for nine months when we were doing some recommendations. All of our, four of the five recommendations we presented to the council were implemented. Thank you for that as well. Thank you so much. We'll miss you.
Say a few words?
Thank you so much for this presentation. I am happy and glad that the city council had recognized my contribution to the community. And I will treasure this public service so much, and I won't forget. And thank you for the recognition. Thank you so much.
I also recognize the better half and also our Chair, Library and Education Commission, Yula. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Chua, for tonight's presentation. And next up is the public forum. Folks who are in attendance will be more than welcome to join and provide any public comment. We'll do two minutes tonight. I don't see too many attendees, but we'll do two minutes for good measure, since we don't have too many attendees. And public forum, if you'd like to speak during the public forum and you're in this chamber at this moment, now would be the time. I see movement in the crowd. Is there anybody that'd like to speak during this public forum now, now, now? Two minutes. Okay, Mr. Montemayor.
Good evening, everybody. Mayor Vice Mayor, members of the city council, manager and staff. Yeah, it's just like time to say thank you to you all. You're doing great. Lately, I have to balance. I should not be speaking to the public, but sometimes I couldn't attend special occasions. I have now a job at FedEx, in other words, at least I'm hoping to package 40,000 packages every day. So that's all I can have. So, thank you. Thank you, Lord. Yeah, we are now back, kind of. And as you mentioned, the light, the three lights, I wasn't, you know. Thank you. Have a good holidays.
And thank you very much, Uncle Voltaire. All right, anybody else in the chamber that'd like to speak during this public forum? Please let yourself be known. Or come on up. Yeah, please don't show us. I see you. Come on up. Oh, other way. Okay. I'm sorry. Yeah, folks, if you're watching on youtube.com or Facebook Live, I had a miscommunication there. I thought they were going to come to the podium. They're going out the back door. That was funny. Okay, great. All right. Public forum, give everybody a fair chance. In the chamber, going once, in the chamber, going twice, in the chamber, three times. That's it for the chamber. And we'll go to the virtual chamber on the Zoom. Folks, if you're watching on the internet, you can join us. There's a Zoom link that is much more interactive than YouTube or Facebook. We're really on the Zoom, powered by Zoom here in the City of Milpitas. Let's go to the City of Milpitas website and look up tonight's city council agenda, and you'll find the link for tonight's meeting on Zoom. I'm going to the attendees, the chamber in there. If there's anybody that'd like to speak, please raise your virtual raised hand. And I'll look, I'll look, I'll look, going once, going twice. I see no virtual raised hands for the chamber in the sky. And that's it for public forum, folks. Thank you very much. Moving on to announcements and future agenda items. It's like clockwork. Any announcements? We'll go to our city manager, Steve McHarris.
Good evening, Mayor Tran, members of the city council. I do have two brief announcements. First, Milpitas residents are invited to learn more about the city's extensive online resources related to accessory dwelling units, otherwise known as ADUs. With an online workshop we are conducting on Thursday, December 16th at 4:00 PM. The workshop will include a step-by-step demonstration of the city's online tools designed to help residents design and sketch ADUs customized for their property and their needs. The workshop will be recorded and posted on the Planning Department's webpage. To register, please visit the Planning Department's webpage at www.cipetis.gov. That's the city's website, and you just go to the Planning Department there. Second, next up, the city is hosting a hiring fair in partnership with the Milpitas Element Hotel for the soft opening in mid-December. The hotel is seeking to fill approximately 50 positions, including front desk supervisors, housekeepers, sales coordinators, lobby attendants, building staff, and more. Milpitas job seekers of all experience levels are encouraged to apply. The hiring fair started today at the Milpitas Community Center and will continue to tomorrow, Wednesday, December 8th, from 12 to 7:00 PM, and Sunday, December 17th. and Sunday, December 12th, from 9 to 5:00 PM. And that concludes my announcements.
Thank you very much, our City Manager, folks, Steve McHarris. Now let's go to the side of the dais. First up here on my nice system here in front of me with all the buttons for the microphones. We have the Vice Mayor, Carmen Montano.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to announce that the holiday magic has become, is a great success. Many, many families and children. Ditto what the mayor had said earlier about holiday magic on Main Street. If you go there, you'll see the palm trees are lit up. It just really transformed the whole area. And we're, I guess we're doing it by phases. This is the first phase. And then, you know, as the years progress, we can do more. I really, really think, want to thank the staff for all the hard work that they've been doing. So kudos to all of them. And then the other thing that I want to bring as one of our items on the agenda. In the past, I have proposed a consulate office here for different nations, you know, Vietnamese, Filipino. And a space at City Hall where they can meet. So I know that was, that was taken off of the list for my request. That was way back. I want to bring that back and we can discuss that as being on one of the request, requested items. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. I think that's a fantastic idea. Such a diverse community we're in. I, I will save my remarks for other day, but we do have that passport office whenever we're back in person. Let's look into that. Okay, great. Next up, we have Councilmember Fan.
Yes, thank you. Just very briefly, I wanted to acknowledge and thank staff, especially Public Safety, for their strategic efforts to deter crime during the Thanksgiving holidays. You know, I know that a lot of cities were scrambling as there have been an uptick in robberies throughout the region. But due to our leadership and planned efforts, we were able to avoid largely, virtually all of it. So keep up the good work and if there are additional resources that, you know, we would be wise to invest in to continue to deter, you know, these crimes during the holidays, please bring it to our attention.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Fan. Knock on wood. All right. Next up, Councilmember Chua.
Thank you, Mayor Tran. I just, I'm just, just like EU Mayor and Vice Mayor, I would like to thank the staff of, it's a lot of work, the holiday magic on ice. Thank you so much, staff. And, and I know, I know it's a lot of work and we just appreciate you and recognize you. And I also want to thank the ADU workshop. I'm really excited and I'm ready to sign up myself. And thank you, City Manager. Just so exciting. And the hiring fair, I want to thank the economic development for that one and planning for the ADU workshop. I have a video because the day, Saturday was day one for the Milpitas Firefighters Toys for Tots and I was with Station Two, B Shift Distributing Toys. So here is a little video. It's 30 seconds. So, Rochelle.
Yay, what?
It was fun. It was well organized and the people who received the toys were so excited. And I want to thank Station Two, B Shift, Matt, George, and Craig. Also, the President of MPO, I mean, of 1699, John, and Gabe. Thank you all so much.
Awesome.
Mayor Tran, I forgot one thing. While we, while we were doing the gift giving thing, I, I realized that we, we need to look into an ordinance because some of the houses, they don't have house numbers. So we, we had a hard time finding them. It's also for safety reasons. So I'm asking the executive team to look into what type of ordinance do we have in terms of the house numbers.
Yeah, that's key for public safety as well.
Right.
But yeah, we'll look into it. We'll look into it. We'll see what our role is as a city. And if that is our role, absolutely, absolutely. I think that's great.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for being our eyes and ears in Milpitas. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have a virtual raised hand. We'll go in sequence here. Virtual raised hand on Zoom. Councilmember Dominguez.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And I just wanted to definitely thank our staff, especially from Public Works. I was looking at some of the reports for overtime and I just want you guys to know that we completely, I completely appreciate your service and everything that you guys are doing for our entire city. It's looking great. And we will continue to go through growing pains, but I definitely wanted to acknowledge you guys and definitely our Economic Commission, Trading Commissioners. You guys are awesome and I just wanted to share that they're just doing so much work. So thank you so much, leadership, for your leadership, Alex and your team. I do want to also touch on the robberies, the smash and grabs that are happening. We are not out of the lights. In fact, many of you know, I do work as a crime prevention specialist. And I do want to share with you that there is information out there. Milpitas is not one city that is an exception. We do have an amazing police force. What helped us and thanks to this council and the leadership of our police department are the cameras. That has been a huge deterrent. And I just want to thank you as a professional. It literally has made my day job so much easier. And I just want to say thank you to each and every single one of you, including the Milpitas Police Department. I can't explain to you how much pride it brings. I want to share a story. Last week I was sitting in the briefing room and we were recognizing individuals within the San Jose Police Department that have shined in, in our department. And one individual, an officer, went up there and raved about the Milpitas Police Department and how they appreciated their partnership and talked about a major case they had solved. And that was the case that he was getting recognized for. And so I stood in the back with great pride as an employee and definitely got permission to share that story out of that briefing room. But I want to share it with all of you because what we're seeing is, is crime like no other. Many of you know, Milpitas lost one of our own and retired former sergeant from San Jose Police Department. His passing has hit our community pretty hard. So the blue-eyed family is definitely hurting. It's made us recognize that it's just, this, this is, this is stuff we need to invest in. And so today, there is partnerships that are happening throughout the region. I do want to kindly ask this council for an investment in ARPA funding in the amount of $100,000 to help the Milpitas Police Department with one extra staff member. What's going to start happening is partnerships between the agencies. That means more overtime. I believe that we need to give the chief the resources that he needs to combat this crime. We are not out of the woodworks of anything. I do believe we're barely entering it. And I do want to make sure that Milpitas stays safe and that we keep continuing to invest in our department. And that is why we've been able to stay on top of it. And so at this moment, I would like to kindly ask for an investment of, to bring that back, item back for an investment of $100,000 to add some support staff or support time to a position or to the to the discretion of the chief to use that funding for this partnership that is going to be coming. And our department is still small compared to other departments. It will be an investment to keep our community safe. And again, I do hope that you see the bigger picture and that we all unite as one true team to help support this. And so with that, I yield my time and kindly thank you for your consideration.
I appreciate your recommendation, Councilmember Dominguez. But we aren't looking to fund any new positions until the mid-year budget. And next up, we have Vice Mayor Montano.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you, Councilmember Chua, for that video and also for speaking about the ordinance, about the numbers missing in the homes. That's, that's, that's very serious. So that also brought to my mind about a possible ordinance because I've been people have been complaining to me that there's like 15 people living in a, in one house. And I, and I think that's a fire hazard, but I'm not sure. So anyway, if we can look into that as a possible ordinance or if there is an ordinance already in place of not having so many, maybe like, I don't know, I think I was told that there's like 20 people living in one house. So not sure if that's true, but, but I'm pretty sure we have, there has to be some kind of safety issue on that. So maybe we can look into that. And if there is an ordinance on that, we can probably make one. Not sure. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Mary. I, you know, every structure has a sort of maximum capacity and stuff. So let's go ahead and reinforce it righteously. Again, public safety is the number one concern. You know, if you can only put so many people into City Hall or Big Al's, then every structure needs to have a capacity. And I'm sure that's out there somewhere. We'll, we'll investigate that, huh? And take action. I like that. Public safety. Okay, great. My announcements are, I kind of waited till the end. I just want to give my full thanks to our city staff, the frontline workers, recreation services, Public Works, the police department, the fire department, really everybody that's taking a role in Holiday Magic on Main Street. It is not unseen, the behind-the-scenes work as our families enjoy the holiday spirit during the event and with all the activities. I want to just really give kudos. I never really used the word kudos until recently. But I want to give the word kudos to all the city staff. It's just if it wasn't for our city staff and our organization, our team, this wouldn't be possible. And it's a special thank you tonight to all those that are playing a role either at the event or even here. It's an extra effort and I'm truly thankful. Just seeing the look on some of our staff faces. I feel they're having the holiday spirit in them as well out there. So just a good all-around vibe, having a great time. Truly grateful. And I know we got other, more events coming up next calendar year, 4th of July. That's going to be exciting as well. We're, we're going to have a Ferris wheel, so that'll be neat. Okay, great. I do see a virtual raised hand as I preside over this meeting. Councilmember Dominguez, you have a virtual raised hand up? Did you need help?
I sure do. Are you calling them?
Yes, you have your virtual raised hand.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Mayor. I just got some information in terms of my request and I wanted to clarify. When you said not an extra staff member. So at this point, I want to kindly ask this council and remind them that the smashing grabs are not your everyday crime. This is organized crime. I have some data. Three other law enforcement agencies are investing $60,000 to $80,000 from the ARPA funding. And I would like Milpitas to do the same. This particular funding is helping support their law enforcement agency in order to provide extra overtime to form the partnerships with other law enforcement agencies. I would like to kindly ask for a second or for this recommendation. Our police department really needs this funding. If we were able to spend $300,000 on a Christmas event, we should be able to spend at least $85,000 supporting the Milpitas Police Department with this non-traditional organized crime that is coming through our region. And it's a matter of time before Milpitas gets hit. They need the extra time. They need the extra resources. People are exhausted. And so at this time, I am asking this council to take this very seriously. This is a very serious crime. It kills people. And I don't want to be part of a council in this region that did absolutely nothing to support their, their police department through this type of crime. I kindly ask for your support and I hope that somebody does second it so we could go to a line vote. Thank you.
I, I just want to repeat that there have been other requests for funding new positions that have been deferred procedurally to the mid-year budget. It is really never the case where we're creating and funding new positions outside of the budget cycle. I don't even think you have a plan to fund this position long-term. So you'll need to gather the research and present that to our city manager or through the memo process. Let's go to Councilmember Fan.
Actually, I'm not done yet. I would like point of clarification. It is not
not on the agenda.
Not a position that I'm asking. It's just extra funding from ARPA just the same way that you put funding into this magic in, in Main Street. There is no procedural difference. There is no
friendly reminder. This is not on the agenda, so we're going to move on here.
I am asking for your support. Are you declining the support?
Councilmember Fan, thank you.
Are you declining the support?
This is not on the agenda. Councilmember Fan, please.
Are you declining the support? Yes or no, Mayor?
We're moving on. This is not on the agenda. Councilmember Fan, please.
Again, I'm asked, I'm not done yet, Mayor. I am still
This is, this is not on the agenda.
My request, it's like everybody else's request, Mayor. I'm going to stop and I'm going to
Okay, let's go to Councilmember Fan. Please have some respect for Councilmember Fan. Please have some respect for Councilmember Fan. Let's go to Councilmember Fan.
I am asking you. I'm not done yet.
You're welcome, Councilmember Fan.
I am not
Councilmember Fan, please, please, please. Let's have some respect. Let's have some point of order. You're out of order. Have some respect. Councilmember Fan.
Councilmember Fan, could I please finish my sentence?
Okay, Councilmember Fan, please. This is not on the agenda. We'll go to Councilmember Fan.
I'm not speaking on the agenda. I was, I still had an active conversation when you started being
The council member is out of order, clearly. Out of order, clearly. Councilmember Fan.
I'll be brief and then, you know, if parties would like to continue with their statements.
Please give Councilmember Fan a chance. Thank you.
Yeah, you know, in, in terms of process, which, you know, I think is very important. Typically speaking, in terms of funding requests for additional personnel, that, that is something that I would like to follow up with staff input. But, you know, I'm, I'm not inclined to oppose it. I just would like a staff clarification on the position and, you know, if, if this is a request that makes the most sense for the organization. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you very much. Now, this is a friendly reminder that this item is not on the agenda. And we've already exceeded the really generous five-minute time period. So let's move on here.
Actually, I'm not done yet. You said I could have my time as soon as the council member. And I want to kindly remind both of you, I am not asking for extra
Councilmember Dominguez, this is not on the agenda and we've spent enough time on it. So
Part of the announcement and we would spend more time on it if you don't let me finish my thought process.
You, you've been given the time to You, you've been given the time to propose your item. Let's go to the council. Is there a second?
Could I clarify my request?
The idea has died. We're moving on. We're moving on. Let's get the, let's get the microphones, please. They're out of order. I will call upon them. I will call upon them. There is no second to their proposal, so it dies. Okay? We're moving on with the agenda. Announcement of conflict of interest and campaign contributions. If any member would like to speak at the appropriate time within the rules of order, I will call upon you at your request. Announcement of conflict of interest and campaign contributions. Chris.
Thank you, Mayor Tran. At this time, I'd ask the mayor and council member whether he or she has any financial or personal conflict of interest related to any of the items on tonight's agenda. We'll start with Councilmember Chua.
None.
Thank you, Councilmember Dominguez. Thank you, Councilmember Fan.
None.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Montana.
None.
Thank you, and Mayor Tran.
None.
Let the record reflect none to the first question. And I also ask the mayor and the city council to please disclose any campaign contributions of a hundred or more received from any, uh, received within the last twelve months, rather, from any of the parties entering into contracts with the city on tonight's agenda or any development project applicant on tonight's agenda. Councilmember Chua?
None.
Thank you, Councilmember Dominguez.
None.
Thank you, Councilmember Fan.
None.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Montana.
None.
Thank you, and Mayor Tran.
None.
Let the record reflect none to both questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. Next up is the reading of the City Council Code of Conduct. Very timely. I'll go ahead and read it. The Milpita City Council Code of Conduct. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in across Milpitas on Facebook Live or YouTube dot com. And our guests in the chamber. Here we go. Be respectful and courteous. Words, tone, and body language. Model civility. Avoid surprises. Praise publicly and criticize privately. Focus on the issue, not the person. I think that's maybe the best one. Refrain from using electronic devices while on the council days as much as possible. Disclose conflicts of interest and affiliations related to agenda items. Separate governing from campaigning. The council speaks with one voice after making policy on issues. Respect the line between policy and administration. Shout out to city staff. We appreciate you. Council will hold one another accountable to comply with this code of conduct. That's also a good one. All right, moving on here to the approval of agenda. Let's take a look, folks. I want to first address item number nineteen on tonight's agenda. We've received a request from the applicant. The person behind the project to continue this item to a future date. Item number nineteen, we received a request to move it to a future date and I think that's what we should do. So for the agenda tonight, I'd like to move item number nineteen to a future date. And that's at the request of the applicant. And I think that's fine. And we'll work with the applicant with great faith to bring them back and present them an opportunity when they're ready. I would also like to move item number eighteen to the next city council meeting. Reason being, staff has done an excellent job and it's actually been ready for quite some time. It is I, it is I that needs more time to look over it. I take full responsibility. And I want to thank staff, certain staff person. I really thank you for allowing me more time to look at it. I do think it is an important item. The City Council Handbook for future city councils for many years to come. So I want to postpone item number eight, item number eighteen as well. Just want to review it. I, you know, it's it's going to be a handbook councils will look back on maybe ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty years from now. You never know. And they'll say, hey, that council in twenty twenty-one, they put this thing together. And I want to make sure that I put some signature moves in there, ensuring that portions are included. So I, I do want to thank staff again. That's on me. I need more time. It's me. Okay? And so those are my two requests to move eighteen and nineteen. Postpone them in proper terminology. And so I will go to my colleagues on the council if there's any requests for the agenda. We have a virtual raised hand from Councilmember Dominguez.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I also agree on the handbook. There is some alterations that I would also like to make. I want to make sure that the handbook also provides some checks and balances for the mayor position. So thank you so much for pulling it. I also want to pull item sixteen for discussion, which is the recommendation for the planning commission. I do have some questions around the appointment and an equity and diverse lens that I would like some questions answered as well as I don't see the attachments for all the applicants. So I want to clarify actions if maybe I just can't see them. Or was there only one applicant? So I want to understand what the selection process was in your mind. So maybe you could help me understand that. So I'm not too sure if you, if we want to pull it out of consent so we could have discussion or if you want to bring the item back.
Okay, great. Thank you. So we'll pull item number sixteen per the request of Councilmember Dominguez for discussion. And item number eighteen, I made a sort of a motion to postpone that item to the next regular city council meeting. Councilmember Dominguez, you are requesting to pull the item for discussion tonight?
Yes, on item, sorry, it was item sixteen.
Okay, what was your request for item eighteen?
Sorry, not eight, uh, for eighteen is also pulling it because I also have some recommendations for some checks and balances for the mayor position.
Okay, great. I've actually previously made a motion to postpone the item until the next
Okay, perfect.
Where council meeting. So if you can kind of review that item after tonight, you can bring back your questions at the next meeting.
Perfect. Sounds great. And then item sixteen, would you like to pull it today or to talk about today?
Yes, I, we're, per the request of Councilmember Dominguez, we're pulling item number sixteen for discussion.
I also want to pull item fifteen.
Okay.
And I also want to pull item. Think it was. Okay, those are the two that I would like to for discussion.
Okay, great. All right, we'll go to the Councilmember Chua.
Thank you, Mayor Tran. I would like to pull C seven, please, on the consent.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Chua.
And I just want to comment on C twelve, if I'm, if I may. Is this a good time, Mayor?
Anytime's a good time.
I just want to commend our finance director, Lauren Lai, for the recommendation to, to to extend the moratorium on discontinuing water services policy and late fees and penalties to April first. That is a good recommendation. Thank you so much, Finance Director Lai. Thank you, Mayor Tran.
You're welcome. Any further requests for the agenda from the city council? Look for any requests. Okay. So for the approval of agenda, I'd like to move item number sixteen to the first item to be discussed tonight. Understanding that the planning commission will need those seats filled so that they can operate. All right, I'll move to approve the agenda. Need a second. We got a second from Councilmember Chua. All in favor. Let's go to the vote. Councilmember Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Aye.
Councilmember Fan.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Montano.
Aye.
And myself is an I. The agenda is approved. Moving on to consent calendar, as stated previously, we had a couple items pulled fifteen and sixteen. We'll go ahead and vote on that again. Actually, that'll be fine. Are there any items to be on the consent calendar? I don't think so. I don't think so. Not tonight. I don't believe that. Okay, I don't see any requests to put any items on the consent. We do have items that are getting pulled from consent. And so that was items number fifteen and sixteen to be pulled. This is a sort of a repeat, but we'll go to Councilmember Chua.
Also C seven.
And C seven, that was on the page. Thank you. I don't know what I do without you. You're welcome. All right, consent calendar, seven, fifteen, and sixteen. Those items will be pulled for discussion. And per usual, we'll move those items to the end of the agenda. With the exception of item number sixteen tonight, we need to get some movement there for the planning commission. I'll go ahead and move to approve the consent calendar. Very simple tonight. Need a second. We got a second from the Vice Mayor. Quickly to the speak button and we'll go to the vote. Councilmember Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Aye.
Councilmember Fan.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Montano.
Aye.
And myself is an I. The consent calendar has been approved. And we'll move forward here. Take it up here. Okay, interesting night, interesting night. Let's see what we got here, folks. Let's go to item number sixteen. Consider recommendations from myself for appointments to city commissions. And this item was pulled by a council member Dominguez. Yes.
Mayor Tran, thank you. I just wanted to confirm and, and the city clerk and I are conversing, just making sure that the minutes that you approved on consent includes, includes the revised version that was sent to you earlier today.
Uh, that's, yes, that's, that's correct.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Absolutely, absolutely. We have that very well. Okay. Back to item number sixteen. Let's consider the recommendations from myself for appointments to the city commissions. And the item was pulled by Councilmember Dominguez. We'll take your inquisitions.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I just wanted to kindly ask if, how many applicants were there for the planning commission that seat that's vacant?
We'll go to our city clerk.
I'd have to double check that. You give me a minute.
Thank you.
Do you have any further questions while we're pulling up the application list?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. Actually, maybe you could just help me understand your thought process when you were making the appointment in terms of the qualifications of this member compared to other applicants that applied for this position. And maybe just help us understand what your thought process was. And I believe that we were fulfilling the position. And who, whose position were we filling again?
Oh, can you ask one question at a time?
Sure.
Not, not sure.
Sure. So help me understand your thought process when you were going through the different applicants that applied. And how many applicants applied?
Okay, great. I'll answer the first part. And the second part, our city clerk will have that record for you. We actually have applications throughout the whole year that are on file. So it's always an opportunity to apply for any commission, including, which commission are you referring to tonight?
The one that you have made the appointment for?
Okay, that's
That's the planning commission?
Okay.
Um, so I'm sorry?
Okay, we'll go to the planning commission. So, yeah, you know, I like to look at the applicant in terms of their roots in the community. The number of years they've lived in Milpitas is important to me. I like to appoint commissioners throughout the city that understand a well-balanced idea of the needs of our residents and the voices of our residents. The city clerk is gathering more information for you. Do you have any other questions?
Yes, because the planning commission is your appointment, correct?
I have nominations tonight for appointment.
Perfect. So within the nominations, are the, is that the only criteria, quantifiable criteria that you take into consideration for the planning commission? And could me, and could you maybe, maybe explain a little bit to the audience what the planning commission does and why this commission is so important to Phil?
Sure. Would you like to answer that question for our audience?
Unfortunately, I don't have the power of the mayor, so I want to be respectful as you've asked me earlier. So I want to be respectful. That, that's the power that you have. So I think it would be great if the audience hears it from you. Thank you so much.
So you don't know this information?
Oh, absolutely. It's just not in my power. So I'm, because you're the one that's being appointing and recommending these appointments. I want to understand your thought process that you put when you go through each application and how do you measure, measure their qualifications? That's important to me.
Oh, geez, that's a big question. You know what? I've appointed so many people over the years. I mean, how many commissions do we have? Like a dozen? I've appointed a lot of people to your commission over at the Economic Development and Trade. I I appoint commissioners all the time.
No, help me understand for the
I'm sorry, I'm trying to, I'm trying to answer your question. I'm sorry.
That's not the question. That's not the question that I asked you. I'm talking about the planning commission, the one that you're asking us to fill today. So I'm asking, how do you measure the qualifications of this applicant? And how did you compare that to other applicants so they could have a fair chance in getting appointed?
Okay. Will you allow for me to finish what I'm saying or are you going to cut me off? Okay, I'm going to go ahead. She's going to cut me off. Watch. Hopefully she doesn't cut me off. So here we go. I appoint commissioners all the time in many years, many different commissions, and I'm honored. It's such a privilege to appoint a resident who wants to give their public service and volunteer. And so that's the first thing I, I look for in each applicant to the commission is their heart and their passion. And their true dedication with their time and resources to our commissions. I've said it during the commissioner's luncheon. Our commissioners are the heart and soul of Milpita's government. So that's the first thing I look at. And then I, I do look at, you know, education. I look at work history. I look at their volunteerism for other organizations. It's all on the applications. I tend to lean towards family-oriented people. I, I really believe in Milpita's families. And I think the people that I support are those people. I hope that's a good enough answer for you.
Unfortunately, it's not because it still doesn't answer my question in terms of this applicant for the planning commission. What set this applicant apart? And how many applicants did you review for this position?
Which applicant are you referring to?
Though the name that you have you, you've made a recommendation for the planning commission, correct?
Yes.
So that is the individual that I am asking about because I want to know what your thought process, I want to understand what your thought process was when you're re-reviewing this application. And how many other applications did you review for this position?
Okay, I'm, so I'm going to give you about two or three more minutes. And then I'm going to move forward. I've no, after that, I won't have any further information for you because I, I don't think I have the time tonight to answer or any much more questions beyond that amount of time. any much more questions beyond that amount of time. We do have other agenda items to attend to, but I actually am nominating two people tonight to the planning commission. So your question will need to be revised.
Let me, since you are appointing two people, did you have any consideration of the makeup of the planning commission? Because the makeup of the planning, planning commission, I personally think needs to represent the diversity of Milpitas. And so did that have anything to do with your selection process? And again, could you help me understand how many applicants, applications did you review?
Who was the city clerk here? Let's see what's on file.
We currently had six applications on file, two of which are current commissioners.
And Mayor, did you review and interview every single applicant? Help me understand how that process took place.
Well, I was sent the applications. I reviewed them. And I made my nominations. Just like I have done for the past five years, I actually have not interviewed one person over five years. We're actually at a shortage of commissioners. If you're watching, we actually are pulling one of your Economic Development and Trade Commissioners to go to the planning commission. We, I don't think I'm at liberty to deny any volunteer here in City Hall. We're, we have a number of actually vacant city commission seats. And so I actually, if someone wants to volunteer, I have been more than generous to fulfill their request.
My last question, did you ask any other council member like you traditionally do? You have been given, you gave everybody a spot to recommend a planning commissioner. And I want to clarify that you did not ask me about this current commissioner to move into the planning commission. Did you ask somebody else?
Well, I want to, this is, this is ridiculous. You know, it is a brown act, so I don't really ask around. I just do what I feel is best for the city and I nominate people and it's up to the city council to approve it. So that's where we are right now.
Thank you so much for those statements. And that's exactly, I want to support that. But I want to understand what the selection process was just to make sure that it was a fair selection process and that everyone received the same time consideration for their wanting to volunteer. And so that is why I'm asking, how did you come to the selection? Because I actually got contacted by a couple of applicants that were on that list and they did not speak to you. So did you contact each one? How did you know more about them? Was it just the paper application?
Yes, all applicants have an application. Let's see. I have no further information for you. Let's proceed with the meeting. Okay, do you have any, I don't have any, I don't, I'm ready to take public comment. Item number sixteen, let's take public comment for item number sixteen. Okay. Mr. Montemayor, come on up.
Yeah, for the one thing, Mayor Milpitas. My situation is related to this topic. So anyway, in public, I just emailed the mayor and thank you for extending my position. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Montemayor. We thank and appreciate you. Another great volunteer here at City Hall. And facts, that's a fact right there. Okay, any further public comment for the chamber? Now's the time. Okay, we'll go to the virtual chamber with the virtual raised hand. We have Lisa Reeve for item number sixteen. Welcome. With the virtual raised hand, we have Lisa Reeve. Oh, virtual raised hand disappeared. Okay, maybe that was a test.
A test. Okay, I'm here. I found my, I found my voice button. Yes, I'm wondering if you can tell me what other commission positions are open and what the qualifications are where I can.
Oh, okay. I got your question. I know your, I know your video discontinued, but if you're listening, I got your question. Yeah, we have a number of city commissions. Please check the City of Milpitas website for one that may interest you. I recommend the Art Commission. That's a, that's, I believe there's a couple of seats there. Economic Development and Trade. That's another neat one. I think they're all great commissions. And if you need an extra sort of further information, you can contact our city attorney. Disregard our city clerk. I know, right? You don't want to call the city attorney. You can call the city clerk. We're just like any other town in, in this country. You know, we got all, an all-American town here with the city clerk and city commissions. I hope that's enough information for you.
And I can find notes on the website, correct?
Yeah, absolutely. I think you're gonna love the website. I usually type in Milpita City Commissions and the application's on there too. You can submit your application online. And I will be more than happy to nominate you for any commission. Again, we are truly thankful for our commissioners.
I'll look into it. Thank you.
You're welcome anytime and stick with us tonight. Okay, great. All right, that's public comment for item number sixteen. I see no further virtual raised hands. I'll go to any comments from my colleagues. I know we've heard from one person. And we can hear from more if you'd like. Okay, great. You heard the bell. Okay. So let's see, we got public comment. And I will go ahead and move to approve item number sixteen. And we're going to council member Chua.
Second.
We have a second from councilmember Chua. And we'll go to the vote. Once again, councilmember Chua.
Hi.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Could you please repeat what we are moving to approve just to get clarification?
Item number sixteen, as stated on the agenda.
Could you kindly repeat it for me? Thank you.
Do you have the agenda?
Yes, it's right in front of me, but I just want to make sure that there's no.
All right, we'll, we'll read along. Consider recommendations from myself for appointments to the city commissions. And we'll go to the vote. Councilmember Dominguez.
Point of clarification, the names are not on there.
And we'll go to our city clerk.
And it's not on the attachment, just, I'm, I'm, I'm really being serious. The names are nowhere to be found.
It's in the AR. Have you reviewed your?
Yep, I'm looking at it right now and it just says, consider recommendations for the mayor posted December seventh. There's no names, there're no, there is no applications. I'm looking at the attachments and the same thing. So just want to confirm that the name, what the names are.
Okay, so for the planning commission, we will appoint Deepak Awasi to serve as a commissioner with a term to expire in December twenty twenty four. And we'll be appointing Aisha Motion to serve as a commissioner with a term to expire in December twenty twenty four. And we are reappointing Commissioner Galong, term to expire in December, once again, a third time, actually. December twenty twenty four.
I do have a point of clarification for Commissioner Deepak. Since he is a commissioner on the economic development, I do feel there's a strong conflict of interest. And I want to know, is there a seven hundred form or is there any vetting process to any businesses that they may have in the city? I know that he has expressed numerous times on the commission that he wants to put high density and two to three, four-story businesses in the downtown of Milpitas. That has been something he's been advocating for, for two years. I also know that he does have a real estate agency in Milpitas and so I'm I'm really concerned about a conflict of interest and financial a financial tie that may bring conflict of interest to the, being the planning commission, since they approve developments in the city of Milpitas. Mayor, did you do any vetting on any conflict of interest or is there a separate application that you have applicants apply for that?
I'll answer your question, so. I think this applicant owns a bonfire. Actually, that's on his application, if you've looked at it. So he owns a bonfire and he runs a small business. And he lives here in town over twenty years. So he is, I think he might be mistaken.
No, it's him. I would, I would really feel more comfortable if we have, I'm looking again, the application, is it part of the attachments? I don't, it's, it's not part of the attachment.
It actually is. We, we have it right here. Everybody's looking at it, so. I wish you were here in the chamber. We can just hand it to you, but circumstances are different tonight. Well, the question has been called and it is your turn to vote.
No, because there is a conflict of interest within this individual who's trying to make money to get on the planning commission. So I would be feel okay if he shows me his taxes or maybe his last ten transactions. And if this doesn't include any in the city of Milpitas, I would feel extremely more comfortable. I have tried, I have tried to run his business through the state and I don't see some audit reports on there, so I'm extremely concerned.
There is no conflict of interest. I, do you have any evidence to provide tonight or are you just?
Do you have any evidence that there isn't, since you're the one making the appointment?
I have documentation of the application.
But in the application, it's his statements. It's nothing that's official from a third party, correct?
Well, he signed it.
Okay, you could sign saying that you didn't receive something and you did. That doesn't give me proof that it didn't. I would feel more comfortable if there was more of a vetting process. I know we've done this with other applicants. We have done this with other applicants. And so he would not be, he should not be an exception to that process.
Well, this applicant's got a huge reputation here in town. His daughter-in-law is the owner and creator of Girls With Curves with nearly five hundred thousand followers on social media. This person is well-known in the community. I would be careful if you're going to make any unfounded statements.
Are you?
Unless you have some documentation tonight.
Is this a threat?
I think you should not make up any things about this person without evidence. That's not.
I'm, I'm asking for points of clarification. I'm asking you if that was part of the application process. Did you vet him with his businesses and how that would affect his judgment if he gets appointed to the planning commission? That is a very fair question. And I thank you for the information. That has no relevance to my decision-making because I believe in a fair process. And I have seen comments that have been made in the commission. So it is making me question certain things on his application when I have, which I have a full right to. So, no, I do not support his appointment because I do want to make sure there's a vetting and fair process. Not just because he has a reputation or a niece that has over five hundred thousand followers. That, that has no relevance to the planning commission. We should make sure that there, that there is no conflict of interest. And so that is my question is have we vetted that as a city as part of the application process? And the answer seems to be no, because there is no evidence that shows me otherwise. Sounds like you're just going by his application, correct?
This person is currently on the Economic Development and Trade Commission.
And that's why I'm concerned.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Let me, let me finish. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Let me finish. So, folks watching at home, you ready for this? This person has been serving on the Economic Development and Trade Commission for a significant period of time. That is your commission, which you were the liaison.
Correct, but I didn't.
You have information with this person documented here in the city for meetings and meetings and meetings. There's a history. Prior to this person serving on the Economic Development and Trade Commission with you, they served on the Sister Cities Commission. And so they have a long history of serving as a commissioner for the city. Longer than you and I have been in office. And so this person does not need to be vetted beyond any other commissioner applicant. That would be almost discriminatory. And so over the years that this person has been a volunteer for longer than you and I have been here, they have been giving their volunteerism to the city and working underneath you.
I did not appoint him.
Underneath you, so. You are familiar with this person?
And that's why I'm voting no.
There is, okay, moving on. The councilman Fan with the vote.
May I say something briefly?
Briefly, we've called the question. It's ridiculous.
Yeah, I understand. I want to thank all of the applicants for applying. I think every applicant, you know, has it in their heart to serve in a role that, you know, benefits the city. I happen to support other applicants, so my vote is no. That's, that's it.
Thank you very much. All right, it will go to Vice Mayor Montana.
Hi.
And myself is an I. Item number sixteen, the motion is carried and approved. Moving on to item number twenty, let's review a list of agenda item requests from individual councilmembers and provide direction to staff through the prioritization process on the items in groups one. And provide additional clarification to staff, if any, on group two items. And we'll go to our assistant city manager, Ashweeney Cantak.
Thank you, Mayor. If we could have the slides up, please. So good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and councilmembers. Ashweeney Cantak, Assistant City Manager, joined by Walter Rossman, our Deputy City Manager, as well as all of the department heads for this, this particular item. So I will be making a brief presentation covering some key points as well as the prioritization process itself. This time we have thirty-eight items in group one, so we do not have slides for each item, but we will be prepared to bring up the document with detailed information on any item you may want to discuss. If we could move the slides forward, please. So just to start out with a brief background, as you know, we started this type of process earlier this year in January, City Council provided direction to staff to bring forward these individual council agenda item requests that are made at various council meetings to you for discussion on a quarterly basis. And you discussed this in February and March, we had a two-step process at that point, and then again in early August. And you've reviewed over ninety-nine council agenda item requests and provided direction on all items that required more than four hours of staff time. These items have now either been completed or underway, and if completed before our last prioritization meeting in August, they're listed in Attachment Three of your packet. And if they're still underway or completed since August, they're shown in Attachment One. And since our meeting in August, forty-eight new items have been added to the list by individual councilmembers. And so we're now bringing forward this next quarterly discussion and prioritization of items for you. Next slide, please. So we have a total of seventy-four items, again, in your packet categorized into four groups. Like we've done the last couple of times, group one items are the ones that are not initiated. They've been requested by an individual council member, not been discussed by the full council. They will require more than four hours of staff time and may require additional funding or resources. And we have thirty-eight of those. Group two are items that have not been discussed. They have not been initiated, but they will require less than four hours of staff time. And we have five of those items during this meeting, because we have so many in group one. These, we're not asking for a vote on, but of course would welcome any kind of feedback. But these can be easily done. We do not need to prioritize them. Group three are items that are currently underway or are already. Group three are items that are currently underway or are already included in our work plan and there's twenty-four of these items. And then group four, as I mentioned, the items that have been completed or sometimes they've been postponed or withdrawn, we have seven items. And this is since the August, are the ones done after August. Um, prior to August, we had sixty-eight additional items that, uh, were in group four. Um, and information for group one item again, as the last time around, we, uh, to, uh, provide information on kind of the work effort required. Uh, the resources and funding that would be required, current status of any. Uh, impacts on any other work plan items, um. And then also if any additional clarification or direction is needed from the council. And of the thirty-eight group one, uh, work plan items, we have twenty-six items that we've done. Uh, some estimation of costs and resource requirements, so they add up to about five point eight million dollars. And about thirty-nine hundred, uh, staff hours. And, uh, twelve of the items we will bring forward with estimated cost and resource needs based on council direction, we may need some. Additional clarification and if these are prioritized, uh, today, we will come back with additional information. Next slide, please. So as we discussed in August, the adopted, uh, fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget eliminated or defunded almost twenty-four positions, so reducing the workforce by. Approximately five percent. In addition to the work plans, uh, funded in the adopted budget, as I mentioned, there's twenty-four additional work plan items that are currently underway. And since the passage of the budget, uh, new projects and programs were approved for funding using the sixteen point seven million dollars. That we received in the American Rescue Plan Act funding. Uh, also because of COVID, we have received additional dollars, uh, from our community development block grant funding, so. Almost a million dollars, nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars, um, in additional funding related to COVID. So obviously this increased the workload, but, but we, without any additional staff. And then, uh, because of COVID, there also continue to be some ongoing additional work plan items. So of course there's limited staff capacity to take on new work, and as I mentioned, there's, uh, forty-eight new items added since August. Uh, which is why we, uh, are proposing, um, so, for some prioritization of these requested items and I'll. Uh, walk you through, uh, the process that, uh, we have before you today. Uh, next slide, please. So in order to ensure a focus on the highest priority items, uh, we have modified the prioritization process since last time, this is a new process, we welcome your feedback and we. Anticipate that this will continue to evolve as we continue these quarterly. Uh, prioritization meetings based on your feedback. So you should each have the list of group one items along with the write-ups in your packet. And, uh, this time we will again be using the electronic voting process, but only for group one items, uh, since group two, as I mentioned, is less than. Four hours of work. Um, and then after the staff presentation and council discussion, you will be able to vote for your top ten items on your tablets. Those have already been set up with unique links for each of you. Councilmember Dominguez, I know you're joining us remotely, but I believe you're all set up with the link as well. And our IT staff has developed an easy-to-use app which will allow up to two rounds of voting. Um, so you can click on the plus slot, plus sign to pick your top ten items from the thirty-eight items in group one. If you change your mind, you can always use, uh, there's a recycle bin icon that you can use to. Uh, deselect an item and add another one. Once you pick ten, you will not be able to add any additional items to the list. And then once the voting has been completed. Uh, we will request council take a short break while we tally the results. Uh, voting results for each member will be displayed for the public. And any items receiving four or more votes will automatically move to the final list. If the number of those items receiving four or more votes is ten or more. Uh, the prioritization process will be deemed complete and will stop there. Items that receive less than a majority vote, that is less than three votes, will automatically be deleted from the active list. And will not be available for voting. Now, if the number of items, if we can go to the next slide. If the number of, uh, items in that first round is less than ten. Uh, then we will proceed to step two. And only items receiving three votes will be available for the second round of voting. We'll use the same process as step one for the electronic voting. As well as the tallying and display of votes. And then depending on the number of votes, the final list may be less or slightly more than ten items, and of course we have IT staff. Available to assist you and walk you through the process if, uh, if you need it. Uh, next slide, please. Um, and then in terms of fiscal impact, as I noted earlier, we have twenty-six group one work plan items where we have been able to. Uh, develop some high-level cost estimates and staff hours required, so, uh, they total up to about five point eight million. And again, uh, close to four thousand staff hours, and then for. The twelve group one, uh, work plan items, uh, we, we will bring back estimated, uh, costs and resources if these are. Uh, among your top priorities, uh. Also based on council prioritization, staff will incorporate items that are, uh, that can be accomplished with budgeted resources into our work plans. And for those that cannot, will return to council, uh, for additional funding and resources as part of our. Twenty-two, twenty-three budget process, which kicks off actually on January twenty-fifth with our first study session. Uh, next slide, please. And this is, this is our recommendation, and then of course we, we anticipate you will want to have a lot of discussion about the items themselves. So we'll be ready to, uh, pull up. Uh, the, like I said, the document that has the write-up for each, each of the group one items. So again, what we're asking you to do is, uh, review the list of items, uh. And provide direction to staff with, uh, which are your highest priority items through this process that I just described. And then on group two items, even though we don't need you to prioritize, if you have any input for us, we welcome that. And with that, I will stop my presentation and, um, happy to take questions, and we have staff from all departments. Available to respond to any questions on specific items.
Thank you very much, thank you very much, Ashweenie, uh, I always love voting. I love voting, and so I guess that's why I'm here, huh? Um, yeah, you know, I think, uh, each of us will have ten selections. And, uh, we do have a list of thirty-eight items. And so. Ten votes per person. Thirty-eight items total. Uh, we should all be mindful. Uh, of, of how we're voting. Um. Yeah, yeah, we're gonna get to the questions next. You know, perhaps, I'm just trying to think. Um. If at the end of the voting, we can have a, a sort of a ranking or standing. Um, of course, that's what we'll have, but. I suspect that some items may be tied. Right, if we can only have ten, I, ten priorities. Uh, which is my, which I believe there should only be ten, right? Um, uh, what if there's, uh, items that are tied? And we go over ten items, so what if we have fifteen, just and there's because there's a tie? With the votes, they all have two votes or three votes. It's like my fantasy football league this year, but I'm not doing too good with it. And so that's my concern, but I guess we'll cross that bridge when we get there.
Yes, and, um, Mayor, if I can, I mean, it will only be three or more. And if in the first round, you're all of the same mind and we end up with more items that have. More than ten that have four or five votes. And that's the list we'll go with, but there's, it, there's only so much possibility, so. Uh, it won't be, you know, thirty items, right, so.
Right, absolutely, we don't want it, so that's the next thing I was gonna get to here, I wanna, I wanna thank, um, our city council. For, uh, all the creativity, innovation. And ideas that, uh, each member has brought forth. Over this past calendar year, here we are in December, huh? We've been together for a month. Our, pardon me, a year, thank you, ca- thank you, Councilmember Chua, a year, I can't believe it, it's been. One of the best years of my life and. Uh, this is a list of. Not all the things that we've brought forward to our city staff to accomplish, I want to give kudos. To the city staff. Um, City Manager's Office, Department Directors, and everybody that's ever made anything possible based off an idea of. One of our elected officials. Uh, and this list tonight is, uh, really a great moment for us to. Uh, prioritize all the great ideas. This is a tremendous competition right now between ideas. Thirty-eight of them, and only the best ideas will rise to the top. Uh, if this isn't public policymaking and. Uh, leadership, then. Um, I don't know what is, but, uh, I love where we are right now. And I want to continue to encourage my colleagues. I've worked with everybody on something, that's a fact. Um. Let's see. Yeah, I worked with everybody on this council on something. Whether it was rent control or, or DoorDash, food delivery. Or just all types of things, I've worked with everybody. And, uh, it's just been a pleasure. And I want to encourage all of my colleagues, every single one, to continue to bring forward. Great ideas and let's change the world. And I think tonight, we're gonna prioritize some ideas that. Will make a lasting impact here in the city of Milpitas. And the items will speak for themselves, right? Okay, we'll go to my colleague, Councilmember Chua, maybe take a few questions and comments and then, uh, we'll proceed, Councilmember Chua.
Thank you, Mayor Tran, I just have a question to Ashweenie. Ashweenie, um, you said each council member has, uh, ten items to select. Right, you choose?
That's correct, Councilmember.
So my thing, if, uh, for me. I'm okay because I only have like five. But for other council members, then maybe they have more than. Uh, they have maybe ten. So they will only have one vote each. You see what I'm trying to say? What's, what's gonna happen then?
So e- each council member is picking. Ten from the thirty-eight, whether it's the, the ones they requested or somebody else may have requested, they think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
And so, uh, each one gets ten. And then what we'll do is, I mean, you'll see as we, you know, do the first round. We may end up, because we tested this out with staff, and you may end up, because everybody's picking very different ideas, you may end up with only. Two that have four or more votes, right? And then we go to the second round and see if we have more votes with, uh, more items with three votes.
I see, I see, so you're gonna do it that way? Okay.
Right, and the.
I'm just concerned that you're gonna have a lot of ones. Because if they have ten on here, they will obviously choose ten for themselves. You see what I'm saying?
Uh, that's correct, but then again, we're trying to get at, I guess. What are the highest priorities for the council as a whole? And so that's, you know, uh, anything that gets three or more votes. Is, is kind of considered that, right?
But you might not get that on the first round. So, you see what I'm saying?
Uh. I, I definitely see that, so maybe we have to try it out, but.
Okay, okay, I just, I, I think you might not have a lot of ones.
Because the way it's set up, if there, if it's a lot of ones, they're actually gonna fall off the active list.
Oh, goodness, you're gonna.
So, um, Mayor, I don't know.
We'll try it out, see what happens, but I could just see statistically, I go. Oh, that's not gonna work, okay, but maybe I'm wrong, I hope I'm wrong, thank you, okay.
Thanks, Mayor Tran.
Yeah, thank you, I just, I'm trying to see how. I'm, I'm afraid of the mathematical probabilities. Of this process is. You know, I think i- it's possible that. I, I, you know, let's give it a try, let's give it a try, let's, let's, let's give it a try, let's do that. Okay. Um, let's take some time as a council, you have ten votes. So on your piece of paper. Um, make a notation. So that, you know, it's not like you're forced to take a test. Um, let's take a minute or two. So that we can review it and mark. Our ten favorite of whatever it is, and then we'll go to the vote. Yeah.
Mayor, if I might add as well, when you do vote. If you make a mistake or you, you're not sure, you can unvote, you can take that off and read. It's not permanent when you hit it, it's not like you. Just voted and that was permanent, okay. You can remove that vote.
Mayor Tran.
Please, uh, try your button one more time. There you go, sorry, that's my fault.
It's all right. Mayor Tran, I just want to say that on. On twenty-eight. That used to be Adapa Park. Be- but because, uh, Deputy City Manager has a better name for it, it's Park Champions. So that's now called Park Champions. Thank you.
Mayor, my hand has been up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I don't see the Zoom. Uh, I got the, uh, website on my screen, but. Uh, thank you, uh, go, go, Councilmember Dominguez.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Um. Uh, there were some questions that I had, but Councilmember Chua and Councilmember Chua know that. I'm probably one of those council members that may not vote for all my ideas, so I am supporting other members' ideas too, so I hope it works out. Um, I just want to state for the record, um, if it matters. Uh, our office did an internal polling, um, with our communities, so our votes will be reflecting what our community has, um, said they wanted us to do, so. Um, could we go ahead and just vote now, I just want to clarify that we could press enter on the screen?
Yeah, I think you can go ahead, yeah, I, I'm gonna take a little bit more time.
Okay. Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, you know, let's take public comments, that's. In the meantime, let's take public comments here, uh, come on up, Mr. Montemur.
Thank you. His stuff, uh, mathematically, everything, but, uh. I thank you guys, we were developing from, I'm not trying to reckon of, you know, comparing for a previous. This is very fairly done now. And prioritizing is like. Yeah, that your top three of those, uh, you, I know is very good process. In other words, uh, the aligning, you cannot go like. Yours. May it may be a priority because of one too many being in the city council compared to others. But merging, maybe, um, you have to understand that it's hard to merge, otherwise you get bumped. In other words, uh. Yeah, um. At least with this way. Your ideas is not ignored at all, is respected. So, thank you for this process.
Thank you very much, Mr. Montemur. Uh, anybody else in the chamber for public comment for this item? And now would be the time. Certainly an interesting one, let's go to, uh, the chamber in the sky on the Zoom platform. If there's any attendees that would like to raise their virtual hand. Uh, the microphone is yours, uh, I don't see none. I see none. Okay. Right. And I see a few guests with us for the next agenda item, thanks for. Staying with us, uh, we're coming around here. Okay, let's see here, just a couple moments here. Uh, we do have a list. Uh, if we have it, uh, on the presentation, we can, uh, put it on the screen for our. Um. Yes, uh, for our, uh, viewers watching. Uh, we're looking at the list that you see on your screen. Okay, great. Okay, we'll go to the Vice Mayor, do you see your request?
Thank you, Mayor, so I had a question, uh, Ashweenie. Uh, on item. Fifty-one. You know, we, uh, it, it's, it's on the topic of discuss impacts, impact fees for Midtown. But from my understanding, you're already working on that, so.
Um.
Uh, uh, if you're already working on that. How do I? It's like, why should I prioritize it if you're already working on it?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, so just to clarify, uh, you should only have in your voting list, uh, thirty-eight items. That's the group one, and you're correct on item fifty-one, that's already underway, it's in the, it's a group three item and we are working on it. So you should have.
I'm, I'm looking at the paperwork, I'm not looking.
Okay, okay.
I'm not looking at the screen.
The voting will only be for the thirty-eight items in group.
On the, on the screen.
Um, more than four hours of staff time.
Okay, and, and, and then also, I wanted a, a correction for item forty-eight on the paper, and I'm looking at the screen now. Um. As it says, cha- consider change in terms for, in term limits for mayor and council members. But that was really, mine was just for council members. And then the mayor has made the recommendation for the mayor term limits or some other. Um.
Yes.
Change, so it should have be him and I or just.
Okay.
Change of wording.
Be two items, so, uh, we'll take a look at that.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So on. I had a question, because you, these are for four hours or more, but I feel that some of these don't really are, don't take four hours. For example, the increased number of commission members from seven to nine, that doesn't take four hours. So why, why is it even on here? No, I just want some clarification, how you came up with the four hours.
Sure, Walter, did you want to speak?
Sure, there's, there's two parts of Vice Mayor, Walter Rossmann, Deputy City Manager. One is taking the item to the council to for commissions. Then the second part is to recruit for its addition to commissioners. And so they'll combine those two items to more than four hours.
Well, I don't know, it just doesn't seem like. For some, it might be exactly four hours, but it's not gonna be sixteen or twenty hours. But, yeah, so I'm just concerned why it's, why you put it up as four hours. All right, just want to let you know my thoughts.
Yeah, I got you, Councilmember Chua. Sorry, I had to, I had to step over there. Okay. I will go to you right now, but I will be making a motion to postpone this item. Councilmember Chua.
Oh, Mayor Tran, your item nineteen, I think that's already included in in the item that we postponed. Right?
You're right.
So we don't need this one, yeah.
And I think to have a press release policy, I mean, that's a standard.
Yeah, that's part of.
That's a standard of all cities to have, so.
So.
It's not really a.
So no need for this one.
Number nineteen, yeah, it's not really a.
Thank you, Mayor.
It's a council recommendation, but yet that's a standard for every city. So we should just do it. It's really required.
Right.
And so I'm gonna make a motion to postpone this item. I'm gonna ask our city manager to categorize these items. They're kind of listed chronologically, which is understandable, but, you know, we like to see ordinances in one section, events in another section, projects in another section, and have those listed with the costs from most expensive to least. Filter these items. It's just challenging to categorize and compartmentalize these items as we vote, so. We'll bring this back. I'll I'll move to postpone this item to the next council meeting.
A second.
Yeah, and and I'll I'll meet with our city manager so that we can work together on it. We got a second to postpone this item number twenty to the next city council meeting. We got a second from Councilmember Chua. We'll go to the vote. Councilmember Chua.
Hi.
Councilmember Dominguez.
No.
Councilmember Fan.
I'm Mike. Hi.
Vice Mayor, Montana.
Hi.
And myself is an I. Thank you very much. Uh, I'm sure the technology voting system was excellent. Moving on to item number twenty. Let's receive a staff report and presentation, provide direction on the recommended approach to the development and or disposition of the parcels located at fourteen thirty-two to fourteen eighty-eight South Main Street. And we have our Director of Building and Safety in Housing, Sharon Goy, welcome.
Mayor Tran.
Yes.
Yeah, I was actually gonna introduce the item.
Oh, I'm sorry, this went off the agenda.
Yes, sorry about that. So I'll start off, and then our team's gonna take on the presentation. So good evening again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. As you may recall, we had a preliminary discussion about these three parcels on South Main Street with you on September twenty-eighth. And we are back with staff recommendations today. These recommendations are based on input from you, as well as several stakeholders, including tenants, the surrounding community, as well as housing developers. And in putting together these staff recommendations, we also looked at several criteria, including fiscal considerations, legal mandates, staff capacity, housing goals, overall complexity, the level of effort, as well as impacts on the tenants and the community. And so we believe that the recommendations we're bringing forward today will best position the city to meet the legal requirements for parcel one, while addressing stakeholder input and other criteria, and also allowing more time to plan for parcels two and three after the metro plans adopted and upcoming housing projects in the vicinity are completed. As you will hear in the presentation, there are a lot of planned housing projects in the surrounding area, with many of them being affordable housing projects. And so with recently passed legislation, some of these projects may result in substantially reduced parking. So it would be prudent to better understand the impacts and also the amount of higher density housing in the area before proceeding with parcels two and three. And so if council does decide to move forward with staff recommendations, we have outlined several next steps, which will involve bringing various actions to you for consideration in spring of twenty twenty-two. And with that, I'll hand it off to Sharon Goy, our Building Safety and Housing Director. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashwini. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and members of the community. Let's see if we could pull up the presentation. And as you know, this has been a team effort, including many city departments, the city manager's office, our Department Economic Development, Planning, Fire Engineering, and City Attorney's Office. So I just want to express appreciation to many of the other team members from the other departments for this collaborative effort. Next slide, please. So here's a quick overview of what we're gonna present tonight. We'll talk about the background information, a summary of prior feedback from the September twenty-eighth city council meeting, a summary of stakeholder input from several meetings we've held. And then we'll evaluate options for development or disposition, and then share the staff recommendation. Next slide. Uh, you may recall, this is the same map we had shown at the last council meeting on September twenty-eighth. The three parcels are located on South Main Street, just north of Cedar Way, that's the yellow box you see there. These sites are just a short walk from VTA, Lireal, the Great Mall, and the Milpitas Transit Center, which contains the BART station. The Pine Single Family Neighborhood sits to the west of the parcels. The railroad tracks run along the eastern edge of the parcel. That's the red dash line you see on the screen. High-density housing has been proposed to the north and south of the city's parcels. Next slide. Here's a zoomed-in view of the parcels. We'll refer to them as Parcel One to the north. And that's adjacent to Caliber Collision. And then Parcels Two and Three are to the south. And as you can see, the parcels are all just under one acre each. Next slide. And here's a kind of review of the background. The three parcels were assembled during the redevelopment agency date around twenty eleven, with the purpose of aggregating land for higher-density, affordable, or mixed-income housing. They were acquired with intent, as mentioned, for housing purposes. And Parcel One was acquired by the Milpitas Redevelopment Agency with funding from the Low and Moderate Income Housing Asset Fund. And so Parcel One is owned by the Milpitas Housing Authority as the successor agency. Parcels Two and Three were transferred to the redevelopment successor agency, and then later purchased by the city using general fund money. So they were, became owned by the city. Our city's land use plans call for multifamily development at these sites. And together, these parcels present a very unique opportunity to develop two-point-seven acres of transit-oriented oriented land. But it also comes with some challenges as well. Next slide. Uh, here's also a review of the legal constraints. There are a few of them that are pretty important for these parcels. Parcel One is subject to the redevelopment agency law. And at a minimum, this parcel has to be developed or disposed of by August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. If this parcel is developed separately, it must include one hundred percent affordable housing. If it's sold, it can be developed as market rate housing, and the sales proceeds must go to the Housing Authority Fund for affordable housing purposes. Parcels Two and Three will be subject to the California Surplus Land Act, which obligates the city to post a notice of availability and to negotiate in good faith for ninety days on offers to build affordable or mixed-income housing. And therefore, the Surplus Land Act adds time to the disposition process. Priority would be required for proposals with twenty-five percent affordable housing. If no agreement is reached under the Surplus Land Act, a residential project would still need a minimum fifteen percent affordable units for low-income households. And there's no state mandate to develop or dispose of Parcel Two and Three. So there's not a timeline constraint. Next slide, please. And here's a summary of the city council feedback that staff received on September twenty-eighth. And council has expressed some interest in maximizing the city's return on investment. And interest was also expressed in building a unique project with a mix of affordable and market rate housing, rental and ownership opportunities, as well as ground floor retail and the small park and open space area. We also heard concerns from the council about possibility of displacing tenants and also impact to the nearby neighborhoods. Next slide, please. On September sixteenth, we held a community development roundtable meeting, and this was attended by affordable housing developers, market rate housing developers, real estate professionals, and also included nonprofits like SV at Home. Some affordable housing developers thought it would be easier to finance a small standalone affordable housing project, just on parcel one. And some feedback we heard was that it would be more efficient to master plan all three parcels to allow for creative site planning and economies of scale. This will mean one entitlement process, shared parking, shared emergency access, and it just comes with some other efficiency in that sense. And for-profit developers have expressed that they may be less interested in a project with ground lease, but nonprofit developers, their experience with ground leases. Leased land is not compatible with homeownership projects. That was another feedback we heard. And one more input we heard was that there were concerns about locating housing on parcel one that's next to an automobile use, automotive use. Next slide, please. And on October twentieth, we held a meeting that focused on tenants. This to help us better understand their concerns about displacement. And what we heard was that business owners and their representatives wanted to continue to operate Milpitas, but they were concerned about finding new space and the cost of relocation. We also heard that attendees urged the city to preserve businesses as heritage resources or to provide more time and relocation, relocation assistance, regardless of the state or federal law requires it. Um, there was also input that was expressed, suggest moving tenants from parcel one into vacant spaces on Parcels Two and Three. Next slide, please. On October twenty-eighth and November fourth, we held two community-wide meetings, and we heard some input from that as well. There were concerns expressed that Milpitas is losing its small-town feel, that it's getting harder for family-owned businesses to operate here. Also her concerns that there isn't sufficient infrastructure for new housing growth. And we heard concerns about traffic and parking issues, that these could get worse for residents in the nearby Pine Single Family Neighborhood. And also her concerns that the school district has been slow to build new schools to meet demand. We also heard calls to preserve the businesses, to move them to vacant spaces on Parcel Two and Three, or to buy out businesses if development moves forward. And we also heard concerns that if the parcels are sold, they could sit empty for years. Now I'm gonna hand this off to Adam Marcus, our housing manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. Next slide, please. Uh, so we wanted to continue the discussion and focus on three options for development or disposition. The first option is to sell parcel number one for fair market value. Most likely, that would be to a market rate housing developer. And to resume the evaluation of Parcels Two and Three after adoption of the metro-specific plan in fall of twenty twenty-two. Option number two would be to lease or develop parcel number one as one hundred percent affordable housing, and again, to resume evaluation of the other parcels next year. And finally, option number three would be to lease or develop all three parcels together as a mixed-income housing, open space, and ground floor retail development. Next slide. So what we'll do now is look at all three of those options, and we'll look through a couple different lenses or considerations, as Ashwini mentioned earlier. Uh, so the first one we wanted to look through was the process and how complicated it would be to do each of these options. And as you can see, sort of very quickly, option three is the most complicated because it does involve both the redevelopment agency and surplus land act compliance. So there's more steps involved there, including an RFP, a Request for Proposals, and going through that process, as well as a notice of availability, and make sure developers at the state level are notified of of that opportunity. Complying with the Surplus Land Act adds some extra time to the process, to make sure that there's time to to meet all the steps that we explained in our last meeting. And of course, consulting with the state Housing Community Development Department, issuing an RFP, notice of availability, holding pre-bid meetings with potential applicants, evaluating proposals, presenting the staff recommendation to the city council. And if the city council approves, then negotiating an exclusive, well, an E and A or an exclusive negotiating agreement, and moving forward with that, initiating a process to lease or dispose of the properties through a development agreement. That would be the most complex set of steps. As you can see, the other two are a little bit shorter. Option one, which is what staff is recommending tonight, is would involve negotiating an agreement with a brokerage firm, drafting an offering memorandum with specific terms, offering the the market, excuse me, the property on the market, reviewing the offers, and subject to city council approval, moving forward with one of those offers. And option number two is a little bit in between, in that that would also require some additional time to prepare a Request for Proposals and to go through that process. in that that would also require some additional time to prepare a request for proposals and to go through that process. Next slide. Uh, the next few slides, we'll talk a little about affordable housing. So this is a really high level summary that, um, and it's a little bit tricky to talk about this because if you are going to develop the sites at different times, um, these are, these options present um, a different combinations, but overall, um, our assessment is that option number one would would yield uh, the fewest affordable units because we would assume that it would likely sell to a market rate uh, developer, although it's possible for an affordable housing developer to purchase it. Um, but the city, you know, if the city was to maximize its um, return on investment, it would look to sell, you know, at the the highest value, which would likely be for for market rate housing. Um, option number two would be to develop the parcel one as complete, as one hundred percent affordable housing, so that would yield more affordable housing units just on that one parcel. And then option three, because it includes all three parcels, would include a mix of affordable and market rate housing, most likely. Um, it's hard to predict what that exact mix would be tonight. Uh, so we, for now, we can just say that would be more, but um, it's likely that option two would, um, you know, would would place the most number of affordable units on parcel one. Next slide. Uh, just a refresher, we mentioned this last time, we did have an architect look at the sites and analyze how much housing could fit on parcel one as well as on parcels two and three. And just as a reminder, if parcel one was to develop independently, it could accommodate approximately ninety housing units. And if parcels two and three were to then develop later, it'd be about a hundred and sixty units. And there isn't a whole lot of difference between whether you develop those separately as parcel one and then parcels two and three, or if you develop them all three together. You could pretty much develop the same amount of housing. It's more so the inclusion of green space and retail that would reduce the amount of units that you could, you could build there. Next slide. Okay. Um, as as we mentioned, there are several other projects in the area that are proposing affordable housing, and we wanted to summarize them for you tonight. The first one is that is at the very northern part of South Main Street near the mall and the BT Light Rail Station. That's thirteen hundred South Main Street. Uh, they're proposing a hundred and twelve new units of affordable housing with a mix of unit sizes. Um, thirteen eighty South Main, otherwise known as the Mill on Main, is proposing to build one hundred percent affordable units, and they're exploring ways to do that, um, to find subsidy to do that. Again, a a mix of bedroom sizes and and unit sizes. Um, fifteen oh four to fifteen fifty six South Main Street, that's the big empty lot just north of Senior Lifestyles Phase Two. Um, and that they are also proposing uh, both uh, new market rate housing for seniors as well as affordable housing. Uh, and then, of course, as you're familiar with the two Sango projects, three fifty five Sango, which is which is uh, one hundred percent affordable housing and three oh eight Sango, which was recently entitled, also one hundred percent affordable housing, would be proposing additional housing, um, not on the same street, but in the same specific plan area. Um, all in total, that's about just over six hundred units of proposed affordable housing, which sounds like a lot, but then when you think about, um, that there's still about one thousand four hundred and thirty two remaining units in our unit goals for lower income housing units. Um, it would go a long way to meet that that goal. Um, and then when you, on top of that, you consider the two thousand six hundred and fifty five additional lower income units that we're going to need to plan for in our next rent cycle, which is from twenty twenty three to twenty thirty one. Um, it does help to put those numbers into perspective. Next slide. So I'll take a minute. I know this is a lot of information, but we wanted to group it all together because it all relates to some of the fiscal considerations that relate to each of these options. So we'll just go one by one and uh, and hopefully it won't be too detailed. Uh, so first off, we can start start with timing and staffing. So all three options would require some amount of staffing and attorney costs. Option one would require the least amount of staffing cost, as most of the work would be performed by a real estate broker with guidance from staff and legal counsel. Options two and three are more complex and would require more time. So moving down the next row, city cost and subsidy. Option one would likely require the least subsidy from the city if it is sold for fair market value to a market rate housing developer. However, all three options may involve costs to remediate potential soil and building contamination and to assist with tenant relocation. The subsidy needed for options two and three would likely be determined through the RFP process. The next row is upfront revenue. Option one would likely result in the largest amount of upfront revenue. If parcel one is sold, the proceeds would have to go to the housing authority fund, not to the general fund. The amount of revenue would depend on the net sale price. The fiscal impact section below, sorry, that's in our memo, so in the memo summarizes the major costs that may come into play, um, when trying to think about net proceeds from the sale. A feasibility study could estimate the upfront value of the ground lease payments under options two and three, or that could be determined through the RFP process as well. Moving on to the next row, we have um, ongoing revenue. Option one could maximize property tax revenue for parcel one if it is developed as market rate housing. Option two would likely minimize property tax revenue for parcel one because state law requires it to be developed as one hundred percent affordable housing, which could be eligible for a welfare exemption. Option three could generate greater ground lease payments if it is developed as mixed income housing. A feasibility study could compare the upfront value of ground lease payments under options two and three. And for the next slide, I'm going to turn it over to our um, our attorney with BBK, Ethan.
Thank you, Adam. Good evening, mayors, member of the council. Um, I'm going to cover some tenant considerations really quickly. This has been a a significant topic of discussion during this process, and there are some legal implications. And so staff asked me to cover this um, this slide, and then I'll turn it back over to Adam. So just by way of um, background and as a reminder, there's, there's currently twelve tenants on these three parcels. There's eleven uh, non-residential business tenants and one residential tenant who manages the property. Seven of those tenants are on parcel one, and we emphasize parcel one because of the staff recommendation that that's the parcel that we would recommend um, selling, and that parcel specifically has has a timeline by which we have to sell it, so we don't have as much discretion to um, to to take additional time with with parcel one. So in light of the fact that there's tenants on onsite, the city hired Overland Pacific and Cutler, and they're a a firm that specializes in providing relocation services throughout the state. Um, the consultants that we work for located in the Bay Area and Oakland. And we asked them to do some preliminary research on the potential costs for relocating the tenants on these three parcels. So just um, for some context, under uh, under state law, the the relocation requirements um, for tenants are triggered if the city develops a public project that displaces a a resident or business from their property. And um, the the significant point here is is that um, relocation is triggered by a public project. So in in the general context, that would be something traditionally, that would be something like a road or a freeway that where um, a a public agency had to buy up property in order to move forward with their pro- public project. But but it is more expansive than that. So if the city were to move forward with developing uh, an affordable housing project in in furtherance of its housing goals and working with the developer on that, we do think that would be a public project that would um, trigger relocation requirements. Um, if the city is simply going to sell the property, like we are recommending on on parcel one, um, we would sell it essentially for the the highest return that we could get to um, to to a purchaser who could then do whatever they wanted with the property. They could, they could develop it for uh, market rate residential is what's, which is what we would likely anticipate, since that's what's contemplated in the zoning. Or they could just keep it as is and and continue on using the property as it currently exists. So in that case, what what that property owner ends up doing with that is is a private project. Um, and so if we simply sell the property, uh, we don't believe that we would trigger relocation uh, project or relocation requirements in that context. That that doesn't mean that you're prohibited from providing um, relocation assistance if you decide uh, as a, as a policy matter, you want to do that, but um, we don't think it's a legal requirement if we simply sell the project or sell the property, excuse me. Um, if relocation uh, is triggered, then the city is required to to provide a certain amount of financial assistance, and there's a pretty detailed analysis that that Overland Pacific and Cutler or similar consultant would go through to determine what the financial assistance is under under state law and regulations uh, for that relocation. And in addition to that, they provide the tenant with relocation advisory services to help them through the process of moving their their business or residence from the parcel to another location. Based on OPC's initial analysis, they're estimating that the total relocation uh, costs for all three parcels would would likely be in the range of of one point one to one point three million dollars. That that is a a rough range, and it is very much dependent on on the specific facts of the business. So uh, we don't want to hold them to that, but we did want to give you a general sense of of where that range was. And there is also some some variation based on whether state or federal requirements would apply. Um, i- if we were to develop a project, say, uh, that included some some federal assistance, federal money to to assist with with housing development, um, that could potentially trigger federal requirements, which would which would result in in a different calculation and slightly different amounts. Uh, in in terms of the relocation costs for parcel one, given that um, a larger percent of the the tenants are located on that parcel, it would likely uh, be in the range of somewhere between five hundred and fifty thousand to six hundred and fifty thousand to uh, to relocate the tenants from from that uh, that parcel based on OPC's initial estimate. So we wanted to give you that context, and and now I'll turn it back over to Adam. Thank you.
Thank you, Ethan. And we go to the next slide. There we go. Thank you. So the next two slides, we're going to just give you a quick uh, kind of overview of 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 the tenants and some of the the, um, just a little bit more information on that. So this is a list of the tenants for parcel number one. Again, this is the redevelopment agency site. You can see that, um, you know, in terms of the amount of square footage that they use, you can see the rents. Uh, you can see the rents per square foot. Um, also note that these are month to month leases at this point. Um, none of them are on long term leases. Um, most of these tenants have been here at least ten years since the city purchased the land, and some have been here before that. Next slide. Um, on this slide, we see parcels two and parcels three, same information. Um, you'll notice, um, you know, the parcels, parcel two is also has um, four, four tenants and parcel three has one tenant. Um, there are some vacant buildings on parcel three. And next slide. We wanted to give just a little bit more information. Um, as I mentioned, for parcel number one, the city signed leases in twenty eleven and has not raised rents significantly since that time. The city's current rents, um, here in this chart, and I'll explain this in a minute. City's current rents are lower than market rents. And so this first column, which shows says actual rent, um, that's what we actually charge the rents who are occupying spaces um, on each of the parcels. And this is uh, added together the amount of rental revenue that uh, the city expects to get uh, from from the tenants based on those rents. So uh, for the actual rent that the city is charging, uh, that's approximately uh, twenty thousand eight hundred nineteen dollars per month. Um, and we did look into, uh, we looked at CoStar, which is a real estate uh, data firm that we subscribe to, and we looked for comparable rents for both industrial space and retail space. So industrial is um, less, uh, is a lower cost per square foot and retail is higher. Um, and some of the spaces were considered retail, some were considered industrial. Um, and we took a somewhat of a conservative approach. So we didn't take the highest uh, industrial rent or the highest retail rent. Um, we took sort of the middle. So we took an average of the high and the low, and then we used that to calculate based on the square footage, what the city could be potentially, like, you know, earning in rent. Um, i- if if um, there were market rate uh, rents being paid in all in all of the occupied spaces. These numbers do not account for the vacant spaces at this time. Um, so you can see that um, uh, if if you applied some of the sort of market rate rents for industrial space, um, the city might look to gather a bit more money, thirty one thousand seven hundred fifty six. Um, and then if if you look at retail numbers, it would be higher. And again, these are pretty conservative numbers. So it's quite possible that you know, uh, the city could earn even more than that on a monthly basis. And I do apologize for not annualizing this. I was going to add that in. I I didn't, but um, when you look at it as at an annual uh, rate, that would be um, a considerable amount of of revenue. Um, and finally, for all three parcels, um, some tenants are paid in full while others do owe some back rent. And uh, at that, at current time, there's approximately a hundred and four thousand uh, three hundred and ninety four dollars in outstanding rent. Next slide. Next slide. Okay. So one of the idea raised that Sharon mentioned in one of the community meetings was, um, well, we have this vacant space um, on parcels two and three. Why not move parcel one tenants to that those spaces? And so staff did look into that, and it's it's actually somewhat complicated and um, may not, may not work. Um, this could be costly uh, for a number of reasons and and complicated. Um, and permanent relocation could be triggered in later years anyway. Um, in addition to the costs it would take to um, to temporarily relocate tenants to those spaces. Um, the city would need to make capital improvements to some or all of the buildings on parcels two and three. Uh, the empty building at the rear of parcel three would need to be demolished to allow for the extension of Costa Street to the north in order to connect parcel number one with a second um, means of egress, uh, in order to develop that to its full potential. Um, additional research would be needed to determine the full cost of temporary relocation, uh, building renovation, that and demolition to extend Costa Street. And of course, funding sources would need to be identified um, to cover. So in conclusion, uh, staff recommends option one uh, because it minimizes staffing costs. It provides more time for the city to complete the metro specific plan process, to consider nearby projects into master plan parcels two and three. It maximizes upfront and ongoing revenue for parcel number one. It minimizes short term tenant displacement. And while option one may not result in as much affordable housing, it would generate proceeds to subsidize future affordable housing, be it on parcels two and three or elsewhere in the city. Next slide. And if the council approves the staff recommendation for option one, the next step, steps would look something like this. Uh, we would need to engage a real estate broker, um, commission and appraisal, uh, move forward with. uh move forward with an environmental phase two analysis to determine whether or not there's a need for remediation. Uh, we would need to negotiate the price in terms of sale with the council, uh along with council input. Um, and then go to city council um for the consideration of a sale of parcel one. And and then, of course, continue to evaluate parcels two and three following the adoption of met the metro specific plan. Um, and that will uh will end here and uh and happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, so the mayor is in short break. He'll be he'll be here shortly, but I do have one question for Adam, and that is um you you talked about relocation. What does that actually mean?
Uh, thanks, Vice Mayor.
Does that look like?
Yeah, it's a great question. Um, so the the relocation services include um, uh, you know, meeting with the tenants and understanding um what unique you know, what needs to be moved and what's unique about their business and um, so what kind of equipment they have and what it would take to move that equipment safely. Um, also looking at where they can move to um and helping with um to arrange make arrangements and um and to make uh and and for moving costs as well.
Did you say that's pretty costly and like one? How much was the price? Something million? One point seven million or something like that?
Yeah, um, I don't have the slide in front of me, but yeah, I mean, just for parcel, it depends if you're looking at parcel one only or all of the parcels. Um, but yes, it is.
And that's only for parcel one? That 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 it it kicks in if uh that's the one that or is it all for all three parcels? That they have to be relocated? I think it's parcel one, right?
It it depends if 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 it's triggered as as uh Ethan Walsh mentioned, if it's a public project. So if it's triggered, then um for parcel one as an example, then that's what it would cost. But if it's not triggered, it it's not required.
And what would cause it not to be triggered?
Do you want me to cover that, Adam?
Sure.
Uh, thank you, council member or Vice Mayor Montano. Um, this is Ethan Walsh again. Um, so it it is triggered if we are doing um a public project on that property. So if we sell that property, if if we decide that we want to develop affordable housing on that property and we work with the developer to develop that property for affordable housing, then we are going to trigger prevailing or we're going to trigger uh relocation costs for parcel one. And if that's the case, the costs we're estimating would be in the range of five hundred and fifty thousand to six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If we decide per option one that we just want to sell it to whomever and and get a broker and go out and sell it and take the money and put it back into our housing fund to use elsewhere, then we don't think you would be legally required to pay uh relocation costs because we wouldn't be doing a public project on that property.
I'm glad you clarified that. And also, um so if uh if it doesn't trigger, so that means I like option one actually because that doesn't trigger that. And it doesn't, it won't cost the city. Um yeah, and then also wasn't it mentioned that the owner has the option to leave it as is?
Sure. So if if we sell the property, then it it's then it will be back in private hands.
Yeah, it's out of our hands. Okay.
Yeah, to to be honest, I think it's very unlikely that they would keep it as is. As Adam noted, the 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 rents on that property are well below the market, but that would really be up to them at that point because it would no longer be our property. It wouldn't, it would be
Yeah.
the landowner's property.
Thank you.
I thank you, Vice Mayor. While I stepped out here in the in the back room, thank you for covering me. And having my back, I really appreciate it. Yeah, I know. I'm not sure I use the buttons. I get what you're doing. I just thank you so much. Um, I was away for a couple of minutes, but I was listening in the back. I was definitely listening in the back. Um, thank you for covering me. Okay, great. Um, uh, if there's any further requests for comment before we go to public comment, uh, I don't see from the, also let me. Okay, let's go to public comment. Uh, we are doing public comment for item number twenty-one. And we have Mr. Montemayor. Come on up. We'll do a time check here. Nine fifty-five. Okay. Okay, sir.
Yeah, uh, the options are great. Um, all we know is a lot of people want to live in Melpitas regardless of um a living condition. So I, we have to feel good and uh ask favor if it's for sale. Then hopefully, uh, the plan for a probable private owner will be uh coinciding with our hmm the villa in Melpitas also. In other words, all that was on the on the readings on the screen, um, for me, it's good. It's just, we just be uh, I don't know if we we want to rush. We want to improve Melpitas as we know, and we want it used as to the best. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, there's any public comment for this item? Please, sir, I see you here. Come on up. Item number twenty-one.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'm confused, concerned, and a little bit frustrated by this whole thing. I attended both of the Zoom meetings and am surprised that this property, which had ten years in order to come up with a plan, now has to have a solution by August of next year. That seems impossible to me. We have in the city a development commission in order to bring in new businesses into the city. And we're right now looking at taking and disrupting multiple new bu- multiple businesses that are already in effect. We're bringing in companies like Amazon with big logos and displacing small companies that don't have the same emphasis. The plan is to bring in potentially low-income housing in order to help our disadvantaged citizens. At the same time, it's going to put the food pantry out of business and make them move. So the balance between what we're trying to do just doesn't seem to add up. If we wanted to be really creative, we would do something like sell this property to the food pantry and let them use the profits from the rental in order to increase what they can do for our communities. The current plans as presented to you are creating a low-income housing cluster across from the Starlight Pines, one of your oldest developments, and just north of the senior citizen support facility, which is a new facility for the city of Melpitas and has the opportunity to continue to grow. I think of your choices, the only one that really has any merit at all is number one in order to protect the businesses that are still there. And I don't know whether they can survive because you have taken and put these businesses on a month-to-month. They can't even get a lease in order to determine how long they're going to be in business. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate your comments, and they are heard. Okay, uh, I see no further requests from the City Hall Chamber of the City Council. We'll go to the Chamber in the Sky Zoom. We see a virtual raised hand from Loretto Adema and all.
Hello, everybody. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak out. Uh, looking at table two point one regarding the RHNA goals uh until two twenty fourteen, the that's really uh if I were to grade it, that's really a failure. Uh, there's a lot more above-average housing that were built way, way beyond what was built for low-income and very low-income and moderate income. So I would um strongly suggest the city to uh make sure that developments in the area who will also provide more for low-income, very low-income as well as um moderate um income um residents. Thank you so much.
Okay. All right. Next, we have Lisa Reeve. Okay, looks like.
Well, I got it. I didn't know somehow it keeps flipping back and forth where I get a screen where I can talk and where I can't. I don't know what I'm doing here. Uh, um, one of my questions is is if this property is sold to, is there not a code in Santa Claus that states that um when a developer does build a housing over a certain unit number that there has to be low to moderate income? Um, that's one of my questions. And um I am also concerned about uh, we have a lot of uh market rate uh housing here in Melpitas, and uh we really don't have a lot of low to moderate income housing. And I would actually be in favor of option two. Um, not option three, because it does spend a lot of money for the city and and I see both sides of the the uh situation, but I'd like to question on whether or not that statute would apply to a developer uh putting in, I guess it was like two hundred and something units, that uh there is a mandate or a statute that they have to have some sort of low to moderate income uh involved in any development that uh that happens in the county. So I was wondering if anybody can explain how that would apply.
Thank you very much, Lisa. Okay, great. Um, uh, yes, we do have an affordable housing ordinance here in the city where any new housing development with ten or more units is required to allocate uh really fifteen percent of all those units, whatever it is, ten or more, to uh being affordable. Um, there's also one in Luffy, to be open and honest, but uh I think this council has demonstrated their commitment to um getting those units built. Uh, and so that's a maybe an answer to your question, if I may be helpful. I ran out of time. Okay. Uh, any further virtual raised hands for this item twenty-one? I see none. That's it with public comment, folks. We'll bring it back up to the dais. Uh, and here we go. Uh, thank you for your patience. I know I was in the back for a minute or two, but I am here now uh for this um item. Thank you, staff, for all your work. Certainly uh something that is required with a deadline uh or timeline, I should say. And I appreciate the options. It's very it's very clear for the council to decide uh their opinion. So I I think we're in a great place right now. I actually like option number one. But tonight I am going for option number one uh because um I do have concerns uh for state policy for either a market rate or a hundred percent affordable housing. There are different policies in place. And I would like to really be mindful of the pines uh and everybody that lives on the Pine Side and all our families that have been there since nineteen sixty-two. And I just think um option number one for market rate parcel one uh would really um be advantageous for us to maintain local control for the parking requirement, the city parking requirement. Um, that is very important to me uh to mitigate um some concerns on that side of town with parking because there has been a lot of development. And I think as this council moves forward, um, it would behoove many to think about the other parcels uh and the projects that folks have actually voted on. Uh, we do have that seven-story uh a project that was approved there at the corner of Main Street and Able. At seven stories, I believe there's no parking, two hundred and twenty units. And um I'm just greatly concerned. Um, and we should mitigate the parking. Uh, furthermore, I think with option one, we're getting uh a maximum return on the property, which we must sell. If it was up to me, we'd build a dog park there, but that's not the case tonight. We must sell parcel one for the record. Um, and um, uh, as I conclude my opinion, everybody's got one. I stand in uh support of parcel two and three remaining uh as is for small businesses. I stand with our small business owners for parcels two and three. Uh, but I am delighted to go to the next speaker, the Vice Mayor Carmen Montano. Um, I I do speak to the Vice Mayor um um appropriately due to the Brown Act, and and we always talk about the city uh really, really often. And um, the Vice Mayor had a great conversation with I myself about public safety uh in that part of town and and uh some of the public management strategy that the city has demonstrated in the past with, I believe, a police substation uh which this, I know myself um a council member fan voted for on their CIP list some years ago. It's in the books, but um uh that that project has never fulfilled. And I think the Vice Mayor may have some comments about a potential police substation uh on our city property over there, parcel two perhaps. Vice Mayor Montano.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, you know, I want to let the public know that our hands are tied with this parcel number one. We have to sell it by, what, next year? And um, that's 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 really the the gist of this camp conversation is uh we have to sell parcel number one. How we sell it or how we manage it is the key question. I I do like option number one. And I also agree with the mayor because I live in the pines and a lot of my neighbors, and it's been an ongoing complaint about the nearby developments, people parking, coming across the street and parking there and taking up a lot of the parking spaces. So I do agree that uh the city should have full control of making sure that we do provide parking for those units there. Uh, they also also um the developer will have the option. He will be the owner. So, you know, as I as I mentioned over about that, uh, it will not trip trip over the um, they're not kicking about the the uh region uh relocation fees. That's another one. And also, um the developer can build market rate, low market, but he has to, he has to build low uh fifteen percent uh low income. And then uh also the other reason why I do like option one is that we still, we're still preserving uh parcels two and three, so the small businesses can continue being there until we figure out what we want to do with that. But I would like to propose in the future that we build a police substation. So crime is going up. Uh, the Great Mall is nearby. And maybe we could, perhaps we can uh build some some type of businesses near that substation. Um, so the, that's my recommendation is to build uh this two is option number one. And in the future, to build a police substation in that in that site, in that area on parcels two and three. That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, thank you very much. We'll go one at a time here. I do have council member Fan here, please.
I'm inclined to be supportive of option two. I think every time we do priority setting, the council recognizes affordable housing, rather, housing affordability uh as a top priority every every time we do priority prioritization setting. Um, and this is an opportunity for us to actually act on our words. It's incredibly rare uh to have an opportunity to develop a hundred percent. It's incredibly rare uh, to have an opportunity to develop a hundred percent affordable housing. If given the option to develop affordable housing. Um, private developers would be inclined to not um, go that route. At the end of the day, we have an opportunity here. Um, and, and that's, that's something that. Um, I think I've, we, we can send a strong message on that. We do actually support. Um, housing affordability, because I don't think this opportunity uh, will really come back in the future. Um, if the council uh, consensus. Though uh, is inclined to go with option one, um, I'm actually also um. Okay, with option one, um, in, in regards to the. The parking issue. Um, I, I think that um, one possible. Um, opportunity is to do senior housing as that would require little to no uh, parking. Um, while at the same time, um, still uh, contributing towards. Um, our housing stock. Um, so, so those are my thoughts.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Yes, a lot of things to consider. Market rate, having property tax revenue and. Hundred percent affordable not and other projects we've done. Okay, um, I'm gonna go right down the dais. We have council member Dominguez. In the next, here in the sequence. Uh, hello.
Thank you so much, Mayor, for the time. Um, first and foremost, I do want to thank staff for. Their work on this item and the community as well for coming out. I know. Uh, we have all been receiving some emails and I just want to say thank you. Um, I do think. That there could be more options. Um, so there's a couple of things that I'm thinking about. Definitely parking. Um, is concerns, but I've also, I would like to understand. A little bit more of how we could do local control and limit the parking. Um, in just my time on this council, um, it just feels like that's been a struggle. Um, when we sell um, in, into development projects, um, it seems like. It's extremely hard to mandate um, more, more parking. Um, so I would just like staff to help me, at least as one member, understand. Um, what does that look like? What, how does that, how could that happen? Cause I, I, I haven't seen that done in other projects. Um, in terms of the parcel number one. I agree with the public comment that was made and I've been um, looking at other projects that have been happening. Um, I know that the amount that has been presented, if we move the businesses of five hundred or, and something and so. A lot of money, but when you compare that to just land cost. It's not a lot. And I understand we have to sell parcel number one. So I understand that keeping it is not an option, but. I would feel very strongly um, that we could sell it to a, a public organization. Um, an affordable housing or, organization, or even an open land organization. Um, such as Vegilution who um, does uh, make sure that, makes sure that we are able to sustain. Um, open land. Um, they have a farm in the east side of San Jose. That doesn't only provide open land, but provides sustainable food stores, food source and provides equity. Um, and how amazing would that be in the city of Milpitas that's known as, as for its history? Um, for us to be able to provide that open space and do that farm and really provide. A quality open land, um, that is providing that sustainable food source. Uh, another option that I have seen actually at this conference that I'm at. Um, was home ownership through, home, home ownership through tiny homes. I think that that's something that we could maybe explore. Um, it wouldn't give us that. Amount, uh, that enormous amount of units that I understand brings in a lot of people. But it still would allow us to show the state that we are trying to increase um, our low income. Our, maybe our medium home um, rates uh, in order to reach arena numbers. Um, I do believe home ownership um, is a very important thing that I, I don't know if we could explore with these parcels. Uh, again, land is, we don't have a lot of land left. Um, so I would love to see a combination of that. Um, I would definitely not sell to a development. Um, I do not uh, feel that. The city of Milpitas, um, the lands that we have, there's not that many. Um, I just believe that we've already done that enough and we have to think differently. Yes, there is a timeline, but we still have some time. Um, so I agree with public comment. I know someone came and I agree. I think we have to look at all the possible opportunities that there is in this nation, not just in, in California. Um, because there are some really cool projects that are happening out there and I, I would like to see that. I would like to see that come into these parcels. Um, I do believe in saving the businesses. Um, so I'm more inclined. Again, on that number one and maybe just holding on with parcel two and three. In terms of a substation, um, my experience working in law enforcement, um, it's happened in many cities. Um, I could, I could name a few. What happens with these substations is that when funding is not there. Um, it, it ends up being honestly a home for rats and I don't want to see that. Um, I think that we could do substations in the, um, in the format of. The ones that like we have had at the Great Mall that are very inexpensive. It doesn't require a full staff team. Um, but I do not want the public to think that we're gonna have a, a huge substation with. With signs and officers and lieutenants and sergeants and full-blown operation. Because realistically, that's not sustainable and we just don't have the funding for it as we um, have all seen our budget recently. Um, we are going through a pandemic, so a substation would be extremely expensive in, in my, in my view. In my experience, um, that is the first thing that goes if there's ever a budget cut. Um, because we're, or if there's short staff, which is predicted in police departments all over our region. We're gonna be facing a huge turnover, not only through retirements, uh, but new hires. So just keeping up the numbers in a police department is gonna be hard enough. Um, and so I, I just, I think that's wishful thinking that I, I, I appreciate the thought. Um, but I really would like to move more in an open land, um, and see how we could get some affordable, low income. Um, homes in there and partnering maybe with other nonprofit orga- uh, organizations who already do this work. Uh, there is a great project that happened in Santa Clara. It was an ag of development. Uh, there's another one in Santa Clara, first time homeownership with an ag development. Um, I would, I would really love to see how they did those projects. Uh, those lands, some of them, one of them stayed in public hands. Um, and so they did sell out the land because they had to. But I think that it's really important for us to explore other things. Um, I just would hate to, to move in a direction um, that is not gonna allow us to maximize the use of this parcel. Uh, we have one chance to get it right. Um, I definitely want to support our businesses, um, making sure they're not being displaced. Uh, for many reasons. Um, and so I hope that uh, my opinion is taken into consideration. Um, and thank you again, community for coming out. Um, again, I definitely support, uh, making sure that we keep that as an open space. Uh, that we build a sustainable food stores with an equity lens on it. And that we provide um, those Rita numbers that we need, um, which is for low and medium housing. Thank you.
Okay, great. Uh, we do have three options in front of us tonight. Uh, we appreciate the uh, creative ideas, but uh. We will be going with the three options um, on the agenda. Next up, thank you. We have council member Evelyn Chua.
Thank you, Mayor Tran. Um. Uh, I like option one as well. Because it's the simplest and yeah, and we can't do it. We have to sell it. That's the bottom line. And I like the idea from Mayor about the market rate development and also from council member Fan about the. Senior, senior housing to address the parking issue. Now I have a question to our legal team. Ethan, if you will.
Yes.
Ethan.
Hi.
Because option one will not trigger a relocation requirement. Is there a way we can, even though there's no relocation requirement? Can we go ahead and put that as part of the? Um, the, the sale?
Can we?
I can.
Can we include relocation costs?
Can we include relocation costs? Even though it's, it's not, it was, it will not be triggered? Can we do that in terms of the redevelopment contract?
Right. So you mean funding the re- relocation costs? Paying relocation even though it's not required to pay, but paying it out of the, the sales proceeds?
Right.
I, I think you could do that.
Part of that.
Um, I, I, I think you could justify it as, as part of trying to facilitate the sale of the property. And, and, and prepare it for development so that it's more marketable. I, I, I think that's a possibility that you could. If, if you decided you wanted to pay relocation costs, even though you're not legally required to do so. Under this circumstance, you could, you could fund it out of those um, sales proceeds.
Okay. The other question is, is illegally, can we ask the buyer to? Give the tenants this seven, um, six small businesses and one. One residence, two resident, to. To give them ample time to, to move, to relocate. What would be a reasonable timeframe for, for us to ask as a city to the buyer of the land? To give some period of, what's a reasonable time period?
I'm probably not the best person to, to, to answer what is the reasonable timeframe, because I just don't. I'm not familiar enough with their businesses and I think it's dependent on, on a variety of factors. But in terms of requiring that of a um, of a, of a buyer, I think that would be challenging. Um, just because once they actually own the property, it would be hard for us to, to kind of enforce that promise. You know, and once, once we no longer own the property, it would, it, it would, it would be difficult. I, I think there are ways that we could give some people some additional time, but it, it's um. It would likely have to be while we still own the property, because once the, the owner bought, actually bought it. They would have that control and, and we wouldn't want to get in a situation where the only thing we could do is. Is sue the new property owner in order to try and enforce that. That would be difficult and expensive.
Okay. Well, my other question is uh. The. Um, I think you, you kind of answered it already. Um. Yeah, that, that's basically it. So, oh, thank you, Ethan. And I would, I will also part of that, I would go with option one and leave parcel two and three. Uh, as is, for now. Um, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Tran.
Oh, you're welcome. Sorry, just trying to brainstorm over here. Yeah, thank you so much. Okay, great. Um. I see a virtual raised hand. Let's go to council member Dominguez.
Um, I just have a question to staff. Um. It, I understand that this is on the agenda. But in the past, I know, Mayor, you have been able to bring new ideas and redirect staff. Is that an option tonight where we could redirect staff to see if maybe we could partner with nonprofits? Um, or should, or, or maybe this is a legal question. Do we have to move with option number one? And then we could ask staff to go into. A public sphere as well as a private sphere and not just move into private. Uh, to sell the land to real estate development? Could we include in the direction to include both public and private?
Well, I, since it's a little silent here, it's a little silent here, but uh, yeah, I would say. Um, you can confide in um, Ethan. Um, and then if that is your request, you would make a motion or uh, try to get support from the council for that direction, but. Uh, standard procedure for any item here as a council member, so. Um, Ethan, perhaps you can inform our council member, uh, what her, uh, requested possibilities are.
So, I, I would say we aren't looking for any. Final action tonight. We're just looking for direction, but we tried to, to narrow the choices a bit. Um. So, so if council was to expand beyond, um, you know, the three options and, and direct us to go back and. And do some variation on that, that's, that's certainly allowed at, at this point. Uh, it wouldn't be a Brown Act violation or anything like that. Um, in, in terms of, in, in terms of this parcel one, I would, I would just say. You know, we are restricted somewhat with parcel one in that we can do one of two things. We, we either. Because, and the reason why is because we bought this property originally with, with redevelopment money. That was explicitly for the development of affordable housing. And so our only options really are either to develop affordable housing on that property. Or, or essentially find that we, we aren't, we aren't, we don't think that's the most suitable. Uh, purpose for this property right now, and so we're going to simply sell it. But in selling it, we need to try to maximize our return so that we can then. Use the sales proceeds for, for future development of affordable housing. So we still need to use the money that we get from the sale for affordable housing. So we're not in this situation where we could, we could sell this land for something where we're going to have to. Kind of write down the cost um, for a use other than affordable housing. Um, be- because of the original source of funds.
Well, the way that, I, I guess the way that I'm seeing it is. Um, cause my understanding with redevelopment is that you can sell it. Um, but you could sell it to a public organization that develops affordable housing, correct?
We could do that, yes.
So that's an option.
Yes.
Parcel. Yeah, and that, that's what I, what I'm hearing um, you say is that there is an option for us to move. Uh, into that kind of agreement with the public agency. Um, and that's what I'm kindly asking this council to do is that we look at both public and private. Uh, to see what is possible and I would like to see that come back. Um, and, and so I am looking for your leadership, Mayor. Uh, since this is your chamber and you are the mayor of the city and you have the power. To make that direction and include that in, in the direction, because the reality is, we, we know you have the council majority. So you're going to ask, I, I, I'm sure somebody in those three are going to. Uh, either yourself or the Vice Mayor, Councilmember Chua, is going to make the recommendation. And so what I am kindly asking any of you, um, or I can make it, but I, I definitely feel like. We could work together in order for this to be a team effort and maximize that land. Because we will never get another piece of land back. And I want to be extremely clear that. Real estate is not always the best. Once developers have the land. Um, maybe this is another question. We can't dictate the developer how to build it. We could ask for a certain percentage, which is at fifteen percent, but that's about it, correct?
S- so if, if we were requiring them to build affordable housing, um. And, and so what we're talking about here is really more option two, I think.
Yes.
Um, so if we were going to go forward with option two. The way that it would work is we would likely enter into an agreement where we would. Dictate to the developer specifically what they were building. And then we would put a, we, we would enter into a regulatory agreement with them. That would, that would require that they retain, um, you know, essentially a. that would, that would require that they retain, um, you know, essentially a, a hundred percent affordable housing on site for, for at least fifty-five years. Um, and as part of that process, we, we do have a little bit more control. The, the, um, the, the flip side of that is that we generally have to write down the price of the property significantly or, or, or oftentimes convey it to the developer for free in order to, to make the development feasible, um, for, uh, for, uh, low income and, and very low income households. But we do, we do still have some control in that situation.
Got it. Um, with number one, would we still be able to ask them to have a certain percentage of open land? Or to do a rooftop ag or something like that? Is that, do you think that's something that we could have them be part of the stimulation? Uh, I mean, start of the requirement? And then my third question with that is, could we control the parking situation? If we sell it? I thought once we sold it, that can't be part of the requirement? Once they develop it?
So I'll, I'll answer your, your first question first, and then I might turn the second question over to, um, I, I think Ned Thomas might be the right person for that.
Okay.
But as to, as to your first question, if we went with option one, um, we would, we would not be selling it with specific conditions, um, as to what they would, would build. It would really be up to them. And the only way that we would be able to control kind of what they built, like open space requirements and that type of thing would be through your, your, your land use policies. Um, and, and on the second question, I, I, I do think Ned is the best person to address that. So I'll turn it over to Ned now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ethan. This is Ned Thomas, the planning director. Parking gets a little bit tricky when, uh, affordable housing enters the mix. Because at the, both at the state and the local level, there are a number of provisions within, for example, the state density bonus law. There are affordability provisions within the state density bonus law that allow significant reductions in parking for, uh, affordable housing. And that, that's often on a sliding scale, anywhere from, uh, you know, the minimum that we require fifteen percent. Sometimes it goes all the way up to eighty percent. So, um, it, there's, there's not one single answer for that question about parking. But with, with that said, at the local level, um, lo- local government still does have considerable control over minimum parking requirements through the zoning ordinance, um, as, um, you know, primarily through the zoning ordinance. And then, um, we will also have parking standards written into the metro plan. So we have a lot, I guess the, the best answer I can give is that we have a lot of tools at our disposal, but it really depends on the, the mix. Um, it's the affordable housing mix within the project as to what exact housing, or excuse me, exact parking standard would apply.
Thank you, Ned. And so now, as I'm hearing you speak, thank you so much for that information. I learned something today. I, I, these questions are definitely a little bit more complicated for this kind of project. Uh, my question is now, would we be able to control the parking through the metro, metro plan? If we went with option two?
If you have a comment on that, I,
The, the one comment I have is, is that we, we would accept that they would likely, since it's affordable housing, they would likely, um, exercise their rights under the state density bonus law, which allows them a fair bit of discretion in, in reducing their parking obligations.
Okay.
So, so the state kind of preempts us on that, on that one.
Okay, understood. Thank you, thank.
Not to add a wrinkle, but, um, it also depends on the type of, nowadays, uh, be- because there've been so much recent housing legislation. It, it also depends upon the type of application that the, the developer might submit under, uh, scenario two. And I'm speaking specifically about S, uh, Senate Bill thirty-five, which, uh, again, and, and there are others that, one, once again, um, uh, has provision, special provisions in there related to parking that if, if the applicant were to exercise their right to submit that as what we would call an SB thirty-five application, then we would need to look at those parking standards. And in some cases, it significantly ties the hands of local government in regulating parking on that type of a project.
Perfect. Thank you very much. I really appreciate the answer to all those questions and the time. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Okay, we got some requests from our councils. Why do you see, uh, Councilmember Fan and Councilmember Chua? Sorry. I, um, both of you had the requests. I will get to you shortly. I just, um, hit the wrong button, but, uh, yeah, you know, I just want to say, um, we're back to square one. Like, I feel like we just drove around the block here. Uh, we do have options one, two, and three tonight. And, uh, a lot of discussions have brought us back to what has staff has presented, which is a high quality presentation of our options. And we've heard from, uh, elected officials here on the dais as to what their preferences are. Uh, mine continue to be preference for option one and, um, I did hear some comments. Usually I don't really reply much, but, uh, I will reply tonight. I did hear some comments about me. Um, I would encourage, in terms of, uh, um, direction, uh, for myself or this council or the city. Uh, you know, I just want to encourage all of my colleagues. You know, I, I, I know I am the mayor, but I still am only one vote. And, uh, for anybody on this council who wants to move a certain direction on any item, uh, it would behoove you to, um, uh, sort of, uh, generally build relationships and appropriately, uh, build support for an item with one other person. I, um, you know, even with my support, another council member doesn't have enough support to get things going. So it's really incumbent on each elected official to, uh, work with other people on this council uh, so that they can, um, make, uh, the city go in a direction they believe is the best. I am not, um, a driver, uh, for any of the council members or vice mayor. Everybody is independent and everybody has their own views. And so, um, I think going forward, I want to ask my colleagues to just uh, be a leader among yourself. Don't count on anybody else. Don't even count on me, quite frankly. Um, if you want an item to go a certain way, uh, then you're going to have to find it within yourself and go through the proper channels to get things done. Uh, I am not here to, uh, do things for others. Uh, I represent one vote, uh, what I think is best, put Milpita's families first, so. Um, I, I want to ask my colleagues to just stop, uh, asking me to do things for them. I am not here for, uh, voting for you or to give you anything. Uh, I am, uh, an equal to you. Just vote how you feel, express how you feel, and, and that's it. So, um, I am not a strong mayor. Uh, I am just one vote up here. Uh, folks have seen me here for a number of years, and I just show up and put my vote in, so. Um, to get things done, you gotta work with other people on the council. And, um, if you focus on this council, speaking to everybody, just to be general, uh, if you need to figure that out on how to be on this council and to get things done and worked with other people, uh, then that's what you'll need to do. Um, uh, you, no one here can go call, no, no one here on this council, not one person can come to me and expect for me to, a sort of, um, cater, because that's not what I'm here to do. Next up, uh, in order that I received it, council member Fan.
Sure, just a couple of technical questions. Um, for, I guess, legal. Would these properties be considered, um, surplus land? Um, and would, would it, um, be, would, would it fall under, um, the state's, uh, sur- surplus land act and other, uh, leg- legislation that's related to it?
S- so, um, parcels two and three are subject to the surplus lands act and, and they're city owned. Um, parcel one is not owned by the city, it's owned by the housing authority. And the housing authority is subject to different requirements specific to, um, housing authority owned land, um, and, and is therefore exempt from the surplus lands act. So there's different requirements for parcels one versus parcels two and three. Those two are subject to all the requirements that we've discussed previously. But parcel one is, um, is, is kind of its own situation since it was bought by the redevelopment agency and then transferred to the housing authority. It's, it's governed by both of those laws, the former redevelopment law and the housing authority law.
I- is the housing authority not considered a local agency?
It is considered a local agency, but there's an exemption in the surplus lands act that, um, for property, um, for properties that are owned by specific agencies that are subject to their own surplus requirements. And the housing authority law has its own surplus requirements that govern its disposition of land.
Okay, I see. Thank you. Um, my next question, um, is re- related to council member Chua's, uh, inquiry, um, regarding, um, the, the relocation assistance. Um, would a development agreement, um, be an avenue, um, to, to require, uh, such, um, provisions?
To require the payment of relocation?
Yeah, amongst, um, potentially other things.
Because I, I don't think a development agreement would be the way that you would do that. I mean, I think, I think i- if we, because in order to, to move forward with the development agreement, the, the, the landowner actually has to, you know, they have to have a development plan that they're coming forward with. So, um, you know, and, and, and that doesn't necessarily coincide with whatever they do with tenants. I, I mean, in, in theory, it could potentially work, but I don't think that's a kind of a fail-safe way. Because there's going to be a lag between them purchasing the property and then moving forward with the development application. And, and we don't have any control over what happens in between that period.
Wha- what about in response to the planning application?
Um, yeah, I, 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 I think that would be getting pretty far outside of the purpose of a, of a development agreement.
Okay.
To, to, to talk about relocation.
All right, I understand. Thank you.
Thank you very much, council member Fan. At this moment, I want to move the question. Uh, I know there's a couple of my colleagues here that, uh, have requested to comment, but I want to move the question. Um, I want to move, uh, item number twenty-one, option number one. And, uh, hoping to get a second. We got, uh, we got a second from council member Chua. Thank you.
With, with a little friendly amendment to, to, for, uh, for the direction, can we explore, even though it's not required because of the, because it's a straight sale, can we look into, uh, relocation grants to the seven, six businesses and one resident?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Let's, let's add that to friendly amendment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, absolutely. And then I know we may have some, uh, vacant units for parcels two and three. Let's add that in there too. Uh, amendment, uh, that, uh, make that amendment. Um, and just overall help out folks, parcel one who may, um, oh, actually will be displaced, so. Is that good?
The way I look at how that, there is a few formula on how they got the five hundred thousand dollars. So I would like to see if, like, two, two categories. If we, if we sell the property X amount, this is how much is the relocation. If we sell it this amount, this is how much. Do you see what I'm saying?
I see what you're saying, more sort of a tiered relocation, um, uh, compensation.
Right.
And, uh, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. You're welcome. Thank you. That's a great idea. I'm so glad you really added to the quality of this motion. Absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor Tran.
You're welcome. All right, so I move the item with option number one with the friendly amendments from council member Evelyn Chua. And we have a second from, uh, council member Evelyn Chua, and we'll go to the vote. Council member Chua.
Hi.
Council member Dominguez.
Hi.
Council member Fan.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Carmen Montano, let me get your microphone.
Hi.
Myself is an I. The motion is carried. Item number twenty-one has been approved with the friendly amendments from council member Chua. And that's, uh, approval of option number one. All right, moving on. Item number seven, which was pulled from the consent calendar. Yes, authorize a surplus sale of one ditch witch FX thirty vacuum trailer. And that item was pulled by council member Chua. Councilor Chua, did you want to make any comments? Uh, oh, sorry about that. That's my fault. Hit the button here.
Thank you, Mayor Tran. I just have one quick question to Tony or Chris. We purchased this, uh, new used vacuum trailer excavator. Uh, and then today we're putting it out to auction because, because, um, we don't have a vehicle to tow it that can handle ten thousand pounds, the, the weight of this, uh, FX thirty. My question is, who am I speaking with? Tony, my question to you, obviously there was an oversight here. And, and what have you done that this does not happen again?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Councilmembers. Councilmember Chua, thank you, um, so much for your question. Um, this was an oversight on, um, just the, the nature in which we went about purchasing this equipment. We did what, go out for bid initially to try to secure this vehicle. It's been, um, fairly difficult during the time to try to secure it. We found this one, um, which was out of state. And in reviewing the specs that we had in hand, uh, we were, we, at the time, were making the right decision. It turns out when we got it here, that there was something that was missed. So it is, um, a very rarity for this to happen this way. So it's, uh, there, we have controls that this won't happen again. But, um, this was a rare off, um, situation that doesn't occur very often in our department.
So what have you done to, to, for this thing not to happen again? Because it cost us about four thousand plus dollars.
Yeah, so what we're,
Now we're going back to the auction.
Correct. And our, our, our hope is that when we go back to auction, we'll get the full price, which I totally think that we will. Um, but in terms of controls in the future, just better, better, um, reviews of the specs that come through. Uh, we were in a pinch, so we needed to move fairly quickly at the time. Um, so that's why we had the mistake that will happen this time around.
Okay, I, I would suggest to look into some type of a checklist when you do something like this. You know, maybe come up, create a checklist so you don't miss anything.
Absolutely. We'll send that request to the city manager.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Tran.
Thank you very much. We'll go to public comment for item number seven, since it's been pulled. Public comment, item number seven in the chamber. I see no, okay, okay, come on up, come on up. Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Item number seven, public comment. Here we go.
Oh, Alicia, we gained something from a surplus. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, duly noted. Okay, I'll go to the virtual chamber in the sky. Item number seven, if there's any public comment. With the virtual raised hand, we have Lisa Reeve. Welcome.
Uh, yes, I just have a question for the comments, gentlemen. Uh, do we not still need one? Are you gonna get another one somewhere that does fit what you need?
Yeah, thank you for your question this week. Uh, yeah, the plan is to go out and get another one. We do still need it. We use this equipment for a lot of cleanup of our storm things. If you need equipment, we're gonna go back out as soon as we can.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay, great. Uh, any further public comment on Zoom? I see nine, one, one's going twice. That's it. Okay, that's public comment for item number seven. We've taken public comment. And I see no further requests. I'll move to approve. And I see no further requests. I'll move to approve item number seven. Need a second. Council member Chua with the second. Quick to the button. Thank you very much. We have a second from council member Chua. Once again, we'll go to the vote. Council member Chua.
Aye.
Council member Dominguez.
Aye.
Council member Fan.
Aye.
Vice mayor Montano.
Aye.
Myself is an aye. The motion is carried. Item number seven is approved, and we'll head to the last item for tonight. Item number fifteen, approve for City of Milpitas commission work plans for fiscal year twenty-one twenty-two. And uh this item was pulled by council member Dominguez. Uh, what are your questions?
I had some questions, but I found it. So thank you so much. We could go ahead and move through it.
Okay, great. We'll take public comment for item number fifteen. If anybody wants to speak, we'll just uh do our due diligence here. Ensure we cover our bases. We love to do that here in town. Yep, I see you, sir. You know what? I hope you're having a great time tonight. I love your jacket. Yes, sir. Okay, great. Item fifteen, I see no public comment in the chamber. I'll go to the virtual chamber, virtual chamber. Anybody on the Zoom, virtual raised hand. I see nine going once, going twice. Okay, that's it for the comments with item number fifteen. I'll move to approve item number fifteen. Need a second. We have a vice mayor?
Second.
We have a second from the vice mayor Carmen Montano. We'll go to the vote for item fifteen. Evelyn, council member Chua.
Aye.
Uh, council member Dominguez.
Aye.
Council member Fan.
Aye.
Vice mayor Montano.
Aye.
And myself is an aye. Item number fifteen is approved. Thank you very much. Uh, that's all the items we have for tonight, folks. Uh, once again, I do want to adjourn this meeting in memory of uh the Milpitas family members, uh Kevin Nishida, uh Alyssa Fernandez. And um, uh we will always remember you. That's for the minutes in our history books, and we'll continue to honor folks in the community um and remember them. This meeting is adjourned.